So why do these like? She's one today.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So let me know when we're recording.
No, that was more than, yeah.
So, um, are we recording again?
Yes.
All right. I don't have my gavel, but let's quiet down so that we can start our meeting. Good morning. It is so wonderful to have you here and I hope that you come back every single month. All right, I'm calling this meeting to order. The time right now is ten oh two.
Uh, my name is Deborah Scott. I'm the Chair of this committee and also the President of CCSD for this year. And um, this is what we love to see is when people actually come and get involved in what's going on with the community and with CCSD. So thank you all for being here. Um, we are going to, number one, we have a new member and her name is Kelly Holden. And so we want to welcome you here. You didn't know that you're gonna be working so hard. And uh, um, so we do have a forum. All five members are here. And so thank you for all, oh, no, only four members are here because Karen Christman is, um, this was, this is a special meeting and she's not here because she didn't have this on her calendar. And so we do have a quorum though, because we have four of you here. Chair report. Um, couple things. Uh, I am going to take agenda item four C first. You are welcome to stay for the whole meeting and in fact, I think it would behoove you to stay for the whole meeting, but I do wanna um, have the agenda item four C first so that you can make your public comments. Um, I am so sorry that there was a typo when the when the first agenda went out, it said, no, you can't make any comments on any of the agenda items. And so that little word not, um, that was a typo.
Just to save your page.
Yeah. So we, um, so we reposted the agenda and took not out of there. So you will be able to make comments on agenda items. You will not be able to make comments on anything else. CC, CCSD or otherwise, because this is a special meeting. The reason we moved our July meeting to today is because we have the quarterly report, the end, end of the year quarterly report, and we also have the final budget. The final budget needs to go to the board this month in August. And so we needed to schedule our meeting, not on the eighteenth, but on the fourth, so that we would have uh, time to review it and to then be able to make recommendations to the board, uh, when we have our board meeting. Hey. Meeting member communications, anything, would, would you like to tell people why you are so very good to be on this meeting?
Um, not really. I think we have a packed agenda, so I'm gonna just say I'm happy to be here. Thank you all.
Anybody else have any committee members communications? Um, and I am going to um, say something under committee member communications. Um, I, I think it's interesting that we didn't put um, electing a secretary on this agenda. Um, but I still need a secretary really bad. Um, and you all got a copy of the, basically the, the draft minutes. And so it should be really easy for anybody who decides they want to be um, the secretary to do the minutes. I will be doing the minutes today because we don't have a secretary yet, but please think about um, how you might want to support your chair and be able to uh, uh, do the minutes for us. Okay, any other communications?
Hey, for scissors?
That would be good. We can do that at the end when we do future agenda items. Okay. Ad hoc subcommittee reports, sir.
I don't think we have any.
No, we don't have any. We do have one ad hoc that we need to add someone to. And did we, who, who did we add to your, was it Scott?
We were, we were taking me off.
The, the long term.
Yes.
Yeah. But you haven't.
On that old.
But that's.
Doing anything at all.
Yeah. So do you want, would you like to have another person to help you with that one? Okay. And do we have anybody who would like to help Keith on the Vets Hall besides you? On the Vets Hall project? Okay. All right, all right.
We'll table that.
We'll table that one.
I, I feel that.
Oh, good. Yeah. Thank you very much. There you have.
Scott, who's with you on a long term?
No.
Just you.
No, we don't have um, that long term. Uh, we've done some things um, in-house to look at long-term financial planning. So, uh, what we'll do is.
I'll loop him in.
He's not.
Committee members?
I don't think he's on.
Or we disbanded the committee?
Yeah, I thought it was disbanded in, in lieu of like a new system or.
Yes. And so we're gonna have, we're gonna have those, our, our investment people come and do a presentation. And also the long, you know, the long-term planning people too.
Yes.
When we don't have such a big.
Just so we have something for the future, you know, what, what is our plan on that? So we're gonna have the investment people come.
The investment people and then also what's the other company that we?
Water Works.
Water Works.
That's like a, a system that helps you with that.
Long term.
So as that comes online, that things become more clear for that.
Yeah.
Committee or its purposes.
Yeah. Okay. So let's go ahead then and go to, we'll go to the consent agenda. This is consider, consideration to adopt the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes and June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five special meeting minutes. And what I would ask is, are there any um, edits or additions or deletions that any of the committee members would like to do? Okay.
I'll move and maybe approve both meetings.
Okay.
Second.
Hey. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Question.
Yes.
Because I was at one of the meetings, but not the other, because I was ordered down.
Um, so you can read.
So as you've combined them, I really can't vote yes on the second reading.
Did you read them?
Um, yeah.
Oh.
I was reading budgets.
Oh, okay. Um, okay. So just recuse yourself. Okay. Everybody. Uh, you will. Oh. Oh darn.
Does it, does it require having been at the meeting through approval then?
No, it doesn't. Then why don't you just say yes?
Okay.
And then, um.
As long as you're, as long as you're happy.
Yeah. Well, I wrote them, so I think they're.
Yeah, definitely.
Didn't include all the embarrassing things I said last night.
No. Okay.
Okay.
So all those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
All right, great. Thank you. All right. So let's go then to regular business and we'll go to four C first. And um, since we have our general manager from the Azores sitting with us, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can. And um, and um, I think, is that fine to go ahead and start with four C?
Absolutely. Yeah. Uh, just let me know if there's any audio delay. Um, I'm trying to use cellular versus wifi. Um, because we've had the power go out a couple of times here. So just, can everybody hear me okay and the?
Yeah, there is a delay. Um, so we'll just know that and it's not because you don't know the answer.
Okay.
Okay.
Let me try, let me try if I can hook to wifi and see if it's stable enough. And then the um, LTE will be the backup. So stand by one second.
Okay.
Okay. Well, it looks like we're gonna have to deal with uh, my connection issues as it stands. All right.
Okay.
So I'm.
Yeah, just go ahead and, and um, introduce the agenda item. And um, I think what we'll do is go and go ahead and take public comment first. Is that okay?
You, you want to do public comment before?
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. So go ahead and just announce the um, the agenda item.
Okay. So we have agenda item four C, discuss and review the historical financial contributions from the CCSD general fund and approve recommendations to the Board of Directors. Um, it is recommended that Finance Committee discuss and review the historical financial contributions from the Cambridge Community Service District General Fund towards the maintenance of the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve and provide direction to the CCS Board of Directors regarding the future funding structure for this property. And I'll turn it over you for public comment.
Okay. Would you, um, I do have a question and I can be very flexible. Would you like him to present the full agenda item and then do public comment? Or do you want to do public comment first?
We'll do it after?
Yes. Yeah. Cause I'm thinking that might be even more helpful. Okay, Matthew, please go ahead.
Okay. Oh, this will be a doozy. Okay. So um, when I came into the, the GM position um, almost three years ago, we were dealing with a significant deficit in the Facilities and Resources Department uh, regarding a lot of which was ranch maintenance, the um, outsourcing of uh, work within the Fiscalini Ranch Maintenance, contracting, things of that nature. We could be anywhere between uh, twenty to thirty to sixty thousand dollars in a deficit each year with the Facilities and Resources Department. And that was primarily due to ranch maintenance and the outsourcing of it. Uh, upon my second-ish year in, we hired a third rate, uh, ranch maintenance, excuse me, uh, of, of a uh, facilities, a maintenance technician, a third to offset the outsourcing of those um, jobs. So we wanted to start doing that in-house. And we wanted to start doing some of the work on the ranch in-house without contracting. We were looking at the contracting aspect uh, for the district and we were spending anywhere between eighty to a hundred thousand dollars a year in contracting for some of the ranch maintenance, homeless encampment cleanups, et cetera. So when we started doing a fiscal analysis with our deficit within Facilities and Resources, we've gone back and looked at approximately twenty-five years of data. And we've spent approximately four million dollars uh, trying to maintain the Fiscalini Ranch and staff time commitment. And what it looks like ultimately from our funding and revenue sources that this is going to be unsustainable. And so within a year of hiring Mr. Geary and hiring that third maintenance technician and starting to do some of these things in-house, we were able to balance that budget. And as um, Ms. Fritz will demonstrate with her fourth quarter report and eventually discussing the um, final budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, Mr. Gary came under budget around eight thousand dollars. With that, him being under budget, eight thousand dollars has to do quite a bit with the fact that that third maintenance tech position um, was cost saved. We didn't fill that position for about half of the year. We're currently looking to fill it. So even with the things that we're doing, trying uh, to be fiscally responsible with our general fund revenues, Mr. Gear is only able to come in under budget around eight thousand dollars. And that's with a significant amount of salaries and benefit savings by not filling that third position. That's just a snapshot into some of our financial issues. So going into the staff report. We own and we manage the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve. Um, we've done that primarily through our general fund, personnel costs, equipment maintenance. And all of that um, i- is our primary role to maintain and manage the district's infrastructure and resources. But we don't have a dedicated Parks and Recreation Fund new stream. The general fund has been used to subsidize this maintenance on the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve. We've done several things within the district to try to augment that. One of those is work with the Fire Safe Council to achieve the Forest Health Grant and the CAL FIRE Wild Prevention Grant to not only help with the, the Fiscalini Ranch with some of those, some of those maintenance needs are ongoing and haven't been completed yet, but they're, they're, they're in the works to the wildfire prevention grant that's helping support fuel reduction and other areas within our CCSD owned properties that again tugs on the Facilities and Resources Department budget and staff time. We used to have a ranch maintenance budget anywhere between fifty and sixty thousand dollars a year, which again attributed to our deficit. Each year we were in a deficit in this department. And that started chipping away at our general fund reserves. The general fund reserves are supposed to be used for critical emergency replacement, uh, infrastructure needs within the district. We've been in over a decade of some form of a deficit in Facilities and Resources and we've continued to chew away at those general fund reserves, which is not fiscally responsible. The first year we hired uh, Mr. Geary and that third maintenance technician, we were able to balance the budget and we were able to deal with most of the ranch issues uh, and the maintenance with that budget, which was about fifteen thousand dollars. That set the benchmark for the next year, which is the year we're talking about now, which is why we budgeted about sixteen thousand dollars for the Fiscalini Ranch Maintenance. Because our staff time and salaries and benefits are doing the things that previously were contracted out. Now I understand that there's some things that uh, the, the Mrs. Conley believes um, were, were missed this year or haven't been done and, and which generates a lot of these concerns. There's down trees and things of that nature. Um, but this is what we can do fiscally as far as the CCSD goes to not continually be in the deficit. Uh, moving on. So at one point we had a um, ranch maintenance ad hoc committee in which uh, Mrs. Conley, myself, uh, at the time President Gray and Director Thomas. And we started trying to work on how we could divviate some of these uh, divvy up some of these responsibilities. Um, that we, we never could come to a full agreement on uh, the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch committing to anything in perpetuity. It was basically going to be a conversation of are you able to contribute to this? Can we split this invoice? So on and so on. And so we never really got that really ironed out. And it basically came down to with two board members on that ad hoc committee saying that this is what we're gonna do. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're basically gonna keep a balanced, balanced budget. We're gonna earmark fifteen thousand dollars and we're gonna do what we can do for that year. And when we can't, then these things will go unmaintained, whether it's a tree down um, or a tree leaning on another tree or a trail needs to be closed. That's what we have to do as a district to remain fiscally sound. And that's kind of where we have remained and that hasn't changed. And I understand that's generated some frustration. But the issue is if we take a look at our general fund, there's only so much that we can divvy up that pie. And our fire chief is sitting in the room here. And he's gonna let you know that he was only twelve thousand dollars on a budget this year, and that was from cost savings from salaries, because we had some unfilled positions. And I won't be bashful in saying that, you know, when I take a look at our um, priorities within the district, uh, public safety, providing water and wastewater, safe and reliable water and wastewater services are, are gonna be my priority as the GM. So when I take a look at this general fund revenues and the needs that uh, need to be met with the fire department, including, including two apparatus that need to be replaced totaling three point two million dollars. Um, that covers our entire general fund reserves. So we have some serious infrastructure needs within the district that need to happen. And so with that, I'm trying to stick to a balanced budget across the board. And again, we've done a pretty good job of Facilities and Resources. And I understand that there are some frustrations from the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch and about some things not being maintained. But this will go into the next piece of the staff report is as as a nonprofit and a five oh one C three. And from my analysis and meeting with um, a couple of members from the community who actually used to work for the IRS and looking at the financials. The Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch have a six point six million dollar um, revenue stream. Which is double our general fund reserves. And so um, I, I don't know how um, to do the maintenance that um, is being requested um, from the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch while also looking at this um, healthy balance sheet. And I think at some point, we need to start discussing what the original intention of the ranch management plan was. Was when a- at some point, the uh, Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch who used to be called, I'm sure someone will believe that uh, the North Coast Small Wilderness Area Preservation Group. Or their successor, which is the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch, can exercise their right to take over the maintenance of the West Ranch. And what I'm understanding and what I'm looking at um, from that five oh one C three who is carrying about six point six million dollars in funding, which appears to be somewhat liquid. Um, I understand that there's restriction on endowments, but per the IRS tax forms, um, they are not restricted, at least what I'm seeing being filed for the last three years. It may be board restricted where it takes board action to liquidate some of these assets. Um, they're in a much more healthier position financially to help with the maintenance of the ranch. And the ranch management plan had somewhat of a vision in which the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch would eventually take, stand up and take over this, this role. And so in closing, you know, the CCSD has faithfully managed the East and West Branch um, as outlined in the management plan as, as much as it can, giving its funding i- issues. Okay. The ranch management plan and the recording of the conservation easement, it ultimately was envisioned that the successor would exercise that option to assume the management of the West Ranch. The FFRP is not only structurally positioned at this moment, um, it's all, it's also financially empowered, holding six point six million dollars with more fundraising inbound. And it significantly exceeds what resources the CCSD has. In comparison, the CCSD is a multi-service local government agency, which has to balance its limited general fund reserves and um, overall general fund based on essential services, which is fire protection, water and wastewater and the basic facility management um, within our district. You all are sitting in a veterans hall that is dilapidated and falling around you. I would encourage every single one of you to take a look up and take a look at that ceiling and look at the stains and the tiles and everything else that's falling apart. That is an example of deferred maintenance that we haven't done because of our limited revenue situations. So I think the time has come for this finance committee, the board, to talk about the intent of the management plan and start talking about um, asking the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch to take over the West Ranch and to think about um, exercising that option. If not, I believe our board, our finance committee, we need to have another ad hoc established, which I think um, President Scott is, is working on to really delineate and start looking at some of these cost sharing things that we can do to maintain the ranch in which um, the, the community is accustomed to. If we cannot come to an agreement, and I'll, I'll be blunt. If we can't come to an agreement, when we come to strategic planning and we start looking at the finances of the district, my next recommendation and staff's recommendation will be to start talking to LAFCO about divesting parks, rec and open space. Because we as a district cannot fiscally keep doing this. And despite all the public comment and um, a, a, a lot of the passion that this group has, no one has been able to answer the question on where we take the money from. It has to come from somewhere within the general fund, which means you're taking it from fire protection. And that, that department is already strained. We just lost three firefighters through the loss of grant funding. Now we're down to three O staffing. I have to go through, as a general manager, I have to go through labor negotiations, not only with the fire department, but also with SEIU, which is our facilities department. We have salaries and benefits that we have to negotiate moving forward and our pie is not getting any larger. So if you're asking for more money to come from our budget, it's going to be taken from the fire department. There's no ways around it. Or you're asking it to deplete our reserves, which are meant for emergency funds. That's the way it works. The pie is only split into so many pieces. So if you take from one and if you, you're moving it to another, then someone else is losing. So I understand everybody's passionate about this, but at some point we have to really focus on what it's gonna take to move this district forward in a fiscally sound position. And again, I think if we can't figure out some path forward, which I don't want to do, is a recommendation to the board about divestiture procedures in terms of removing park wrecks and open space from our principal powers. And, and I don't think anybody wants to see the county come in and manage the ranch or any of our parks. Um, there, i- if you think I'm being rigid, um, try working with the county. They're a lot more rigid than, than, than I am. So I'd like to come to some form of um, collaboration, but our budget is tapped and we are pushing the limits. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, President Scott.
Thank you so much. Okay. So um, committee members, yes.
So I just, I wanted to ask a few questions just to, you know, clarify and, and guide the conversation. Um, first one, I, four million, that is, is that, uh, is that nominal dollars over, you know, basically it's nominal dollars, not, not two thousand twenty-five dollars. So those were historical dollars?
Historical dollars.
Okay. So ostensibly the hundred and sixty thousand per year that that represents would be, you know, probably a larger number. It, are there, where I'm going with this is what, what are the projected costs going forward to adequately maintain the ranch? You know, is that a projection?
Uh, I, I don't think there is a projection. I think um, I think we're a bit just joint, uh, disjointed um, from uh, I would say a ranch manager perspective and, and Mr. Gary can, can talk about this. Cause he's new to the role. He's, he's only got about three years of historical knowledge. And, and prior to that, we had twenty years of historical knowledge on, on all the things that needed to be done. And again, we spent years and years and years of contracting these things out and just dipping into our savings account. So I don't think we really, I, I don't think we really understand w- w- what it is in terms of what the CCSD's version of minimal maintenance is on the ranch versus what the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch determine as uh, the minimal needs. And so it's all in the ranch management plan on the things that we should be doing. But fiscally, from a CCSD perspective, and I've talked to our attorney about it, is, yeah, we're a part of the ranch management plan. We do own the ranch. But as a government entity, we- But as a government entity, we only can spend what we can spend. And if that means things don't get maintained. Um, that happens. And I think um Mrs. Conley is has brought that to our attention in terms of down trees that haven't been cut up. And so we're talking to the fire department. All right, we're gonna have the fire department go out there. And we're gonna, we're gonna cut some trees. And believe me, those gentlemen behind you love to cut trees and love to practice with their chainsaws because that's a part of their job. And so uh we'll find ways to get some of those things done. Um, but but uh we're stretched, we're stretched thin on our budget and some things are gonna get left behind.
Okay, and then part B of the question is, you know, and this is uh maybe more functional um. Uh, to Chief Stuckey and Mr. Geary. Is the ranch being adequately um. Maintained from a fire standpoint, from and then from an accessibility standpoint for the public. And you know, it's not a gotcha question. It's really like. If you had to look at it from, say, um, your wheelhouse chief and then Mr. Gary from your wheelhouse. You know, is it at this point being adequately maintained with the resources that we have? I mean, I, I was on there yesterday, you know, it's August and, you know, the 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 grass is up there as a homeowner, I'm, you know, and then we all worry about wildfires and then insurance and things like that. I'm like, okay. It's August and we're doing lots, but. The ranch is overgrown. So and it's not a gotcha for anybody, just functionally, is it working right now?
Would you like to speak to that? The two of you?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, well, just to that point, I would say, no, absolutely not. Um, we're doing it as as best we can, you know, with the resources that we have. And uh, but if if I'm looking at it from a straight fire protection um point of view, you know, there's a lot more that needs to be done out there. And it's not just. Um, we're not talking about moon escaping the place or doing any of that. It's about forest management and actually putting time into figuring out. You know, if we are removing, you know, the the non-native grasses in that area, replanting it with native native uh. Um vegetation. So there's a lot of management that needs to go into that ranch, absolutely. And I don't see it being um, I don't see our capabilities ever being able to, unless we substantially increase the budget somehow, um, being able to maintain that necessarily.
And you would have to increase the budget more than was given to it previously.
That's, that's why I'm saying, that's like, not even uh, this is somewhat.
It was never maintained.
Set up as a, a battle of the budgets. But, you know, have we, are, is the the goal of the ranch being that? No matter who pays for it? And then what is the cost of that going to be of on both?
I mean, the good thing is, is that we do have that Forest Health Grant that is in the works. We haven't, they haven't hit full steam yet. Um, you know, and I know Mr. Gary can speak to it, but that grant really hasn't uh fully kicked in in terms of the work they've planned to do. So a lot of the things that we're seeing left behind are still going to be hopefully addressed through that grant. We're just heading deeper into fire season, which is, you know, unfortunate. But there's, there's bureaucratic red tape and and uh things of that nature have kind of gotten in the way of them getting to work.
Did you want to speak?
You know, as for the fire safety aspect of it, I know the nature preserve and stuff of that nature. I know that's one thing that I've kind of pushed forward is the. The aspect of. You know, keeping what's been going with the fire breaks and stuff of that nature and also our new guidelines. Um. This year we did do quite a bit, uh, the fire department, and I mean, they've been out there, they've checked it all out. Um. You know, we're doing the best that we can on our end. As for the public access and stuff of that nature. Anytime that there is something that does occur out there, uh, usually getting informed from um. Mrs. Conley there, uh, which I really appreciate because I know just. There's a lot more people out there than there is inside of my office, uh, than the phone and walking around myself. Uh, we jump on it. I mean, it it may be a matter of a day or two, uh, but I will personally go out and say with my crew, we'll do whatever we can to make sure those are still open for the public. Um. They, you know, like the dead trees and stuff of that nature. I do have a month of list that I do do with my guys. And those trees are actually on that list. As you can tell, last week we were on them because we ended up finishing up the weed abatement. Uh, that we had our concerns here within the the CCSD property on that end. Um. And and those are things that I I appreciate what's come across as for the concern for financial, because I'm in the same boat. Uh, just looking at it all generally, it is a little scary. Uh, I know. The the Fiscalini uh group, uh, the FFRP, I mean, there's a lot of support from them. I, which I really do appreciate when it comes to the volunteers and the financial aspect of of getting a lot of this stuff done. But as for the CCSD, I find it that um our hands are somewhat tied. Uh, that's how I look at it. At times when I'm there trying to figure, getting contractors, looking at how much is going to cost for this one, how much is going to be for the next one. And. The one thing I know, talking to the GM, you know, the worst case scenario is reaching out to. Him and also Denise um Skritz here in regards of, you know, budget adjustments. I mean, those have always been available. I I know that. Um, but it's just making sure that we're. Or I am doing my diligence as for covering what we can with the contractor or the conservation easement and nature return uh agreement on. And the one thing that I did look at and some of it, uh, you know, our natural financial budget that we're given every year versus what's being spent on the CCSD. Granted, I know it is a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand. I know it's a ballpark, but that's not including what does come from the FFRP. And that's a concern. Because today's dollar is is going to be more tomorrow. And that's where I'm kind of concerned uh on my end as for the ranch.
Thank you. Okay, any other, yes.
That's kind of a two-part question. Now, when when we're talking about sixteen or fifty thousand dollars, is that actually the? The man person cost as being, no.
That's contract. That's only for contract.
Oh, yeah, so what? So we used to budget anywhere between fifty and sixty thousand dollars a year for um ranch maintenance. Which would then be contracted out to several different vendors to do various different things within the district. Um, we've cut that. Amount to around fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars, hired a third person, a third maintenance technician, and our crews are starting. And our crews are starting to do that. That work. And so.
Okay. So that, so that, that money, but that money is not like cash that the the friends budget receives. That's in man hours of work. You're hiring it.
It's, well, it's contractors.
Or.
No.
Or when we have a new staff. Or utilization.
No.
Right.
No.
Our. If you take a look at, take a look at, we have. Sorry, I've got the delay, so I keep messing you guys up. So. So when we look at salaries, benefits, a- a- and those things, that's in a separate line item. And so when you look at what's budgeted for the ranch maintenance, that's specific to whatever we want to distribute that money to towards maintenance. It may be a vendor. It it may be whatever David needs in terms, in terms of uh getting rid and hauling of waste. Um, there's several different areas in which that money can be um spent in terms of maintenance. But when we look at. Staff time, salaries, benefits, that's a whole separate line item. So the money that was previously allocated to the ranch in terms of fifty or sixty thousand dollars was then being spent on contractors. We lowered that amount. And then diverted that those monies over to salaries and benefits, so they could only do ranch maintenance. But they could do other things within the district and we found out to be more efficient.
Okay, so that's fine. So then my follow-up question then is. Do we, do we monitor at all what your guys, what time your guys spend out on the ranch themselves? Do we, is that, is that captured anywhere? So we can assign a cost to what CCSD is absorbing in the way of costs already?
We could.
Yeah.
I do not get me wrong. I mean, I know, you know, a lot of it is, you know, going out miscellaneous, but yes, you're a hundred percent right. We could start logging. And see where that pans out at the end of the fiscal year.
I could use that information.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the cost? That's, you know, what's the base cost of of maintenance?
Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, any other questions? Yes.
Matt, uh. I'm a relatively new member of this committee. I think this was a fifth or sixth meeting. But could you, well, I guess one of the things I've been stunned to learn, and you didn't mention it, so maybe you could give it a couple minutes, is our, is our unfundus capital improvement projects. Um, I mean, I was shocked by the, in addition to the fire issues and fire truck, what that we know about that are in the forefront. Some of these other projects and the challenges that are already on our plate, on our boards played to deal with all of these. Necessary and improved approved projects related to our core responsibilities, the water, fire protection, sewer stuff. That are, we don't have the money to do them. So could you just talk about that briefly?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah. So when we take a look at the fire department. Um, we have uh and the chief is there, so I'm glad I can tap in for backup in case I mess this up. But we have a uh, we have two type one fire engines, right? We have our our frontline and we have our reserve. Um, each of those is sitting at their um uh manufactured date of two thousand seven and two thousand seventeen. We have a water tender that is from two thousand and two. And all of those have. Have lifespans. And typically, those lifespans are around twenty years before they've got. They they've got to go. And your frontline is uh is supposed to have a lifespan, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, it's it's supposed to be a lifespan of ten years or less. And so what we're, what we're happening, what's happening right now is all of our apparatus for just the fire department is hitting its end of life. And there is a three to five year lead time on building new fire engines. So we've got to order them now and those engines, those type ones, which are frontline firefighting engines, are around one point two to one point three million dollars each. Again. We've only got about three point three in reserves and some of those reserves are already encumbered for the skate park uh grant. So we have about eight hundred thousand dollars that we can't touch in general fund reserves because we've encumbered it for the skate park project. So now we're sitting at two point six ish, two point five, forgive my math. Um. Our water tender, which is a significant piece of equipment. Is twenty years old. It's way past its life use uh per the NFPA. That needs to be looked at in terms of capital improvement uh replacement. That's a six hundred thousand dollar expenditure. And again, this is all public safety. This is all fire protection, public safety, and those needs are are being unmet. Um, and we're looking for grants. We're doing all sorts of things we can do to try to close those gaps. That's just apparatus within the district, okay? For the fire department. Take a look at the vet veterans hall. We have. The floors that you're on right now that are towards that back window there, which David will point out. Uh, there's. There's termites that are rotting and eating away at the floor. That entire floor needs to be rebuilt. The main hall needs to be painted and refurbished. Um, the floors need to be replaced, ceiling tiles. We just upgraded LED lights. There's a roof that's above your head that is leaking and needs to be replaced. The kitchen to your, depending on where you're sitting, to your left or to your right, um, has some significant upgrades that that needs to happen. And the only thing within facility resources that actually generates revenue is the renting of the vets hall. And we have put no money into the vets hall. So. When we talk about just general fund infrastructure needs. We've got. And and those are just some of the ones I've highlighted. We haven't talked about. Some of the needs within the fire department's uh station, um, which they, which they've um fortunately enough had a fundraiser and some of that's going to be covered. Um, but but we have excess of.
Is a big one.
Yeah, but the.
David. Yeah, the restaurants, David's facilities and resource building that got damaged in the flood and David. Pretty much did all of the repairs himself as best he could to make it. Somewhat habitable for them. It actually should be moved out of the flood plain. That is. A huge cost as well as.
Multi-millions.
Um, his equipment. I think there's a lot of equipment that that is outdated and he is actually, his efficiency is slowed down because things break. Every time he, you know, uses something and all of that. And oftentimes David is out there fixing it himself.
So uh to to answer your your question, Mr. Erickson, uh, millions and millions of dollars of of. Unmet needs. Um. And and our general funds uh can't sustain it.
Mr. McLeeny, um, that was uh Mr. Rao who asked that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's. But um. You just spoke to um. The. You know, the. Administration, FNR and Fire. Um, I think you were alluding to some of the other projects that are um on the CIP list.
For the general fund?
Yeah. For the general fund.
Water main.
Okay.
Water main.
Oh.
Funding source.
Yeah.
So so that's, that's enterprise funds and and so uh the enterprise funds have a have a totally different um budget, but interestingly enough. I mean, if we're really going to get into the weeds on this, is that um if the enterprise fund gets into trouble on its infrastructure. It's one of the only funds that can borrow from the general fund. The general fund cannot borrow from the enterprise fund, but we have in the past had the enterprise fund borrow from the general fund reserves, pay ourselves an interest rate. And actually pull from general fund reserves to deal with some of the critical infrastructure needs from the enterprise fund. So um, we don't have any outstanding right now, but we've had a couple in the past, you know, upwards of two, three hundred thousand dollars that have borrowed from the general fund reserves. And those things can happen in terms of a critical water or wastewater need, which. Mr. Green, who's here, can tell you, we're sitting in on about seven million, eight million dollars worth of. Infrastructure needs for the enterprise funds that we can't fund at the moment. And there could be a need. To do an interfund loan, i- if if we're not able to, you know, figure some of these issues out. And so again, that's why our general fund reserves are so important, is that it just doesn't feed our. Our general fund departments. It also can help alleviate some stress from our enterprise funds. And we've done that in the past. And so. Um, tho- those concerns that you have about infrastructure needs from the enterprise funds also do play into our general fund reserves because they can be tapped into on a short-term basis.
So let me just say something. Because I'm really proud of this department. Um, you know, Stewart Street tanks on Stewart Street. The board just approved using reserves from enter- from enterprise funds. The reserves are being spent to the tune of two point two million. Um, for Stewart Street. Because they're falling apart. And that has been pushed back and pushed back. So we didn't have to borrow any money. And that was really good. Okay.
Yeah.
Any other committee, committee? Oh, did you have more you wanted to say? No?
Nope.
Hey, many members?
Good.
Shall we? No. Okay, great. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and then ask for public comment, okay? Okay. That's good. All right, so who would like to start? And could you come up and stand right here? When you do that. Um, because this owl.
Big one.
Yeah, yeah, I have, I.
I'll get the ball roll.
Okay.
So, uh, good morning, everyone. I'm Diane Anderson. I am the citizen of Cambria and also the current board chair for FFRP. And um. I like the term that Mr. McLeeny used when he started that this is a doos. And yes, this situation is a doozy. And there's lots to talk about. In terms of how to solve the problem. What I want to talk about for the moment on item four C is the relationship between the two organizations. Uh, Mr. McLeeny alluded to an ad hoc that included uh from Fiscalini, Ms. Connolly. We, nobody from Fiscalini was ever involved or invited to one meeting of that ad hoc. Well, we, we were, no ongoing requests for information, no negotiation, no discussion. And so it, the relationship between the two organizations has deteriorated significantly in the last few years. Trust and goodwill that had been been built up over twenty plus years has been squandered. So we really want to see a healthy relationship restored that's based on respectful, ongoing, regular communication and. That's based on respectful, ongoing, regular communication and collaboration, uh, regarding FF RP and the ranch maintenance. We understand twenty-five years have passed. Things do change. If the longstanding model for ranch safety management isn't sustainable for CCSD. Don't waste your time diving into our finances to make your case about what we should pay for. Talk to us. Let's figure this out. Can you have?
So I, so I'm gonna just step in here and say something because my idea already is that we will do a new ad hoc. Um, from the CCSD board, I will be on that ad hoc. And if, if any of you know, I'm psych nurse. Relationships are the number one thing that need to happen to get things done in a way that everyone can be okay with what's happening. And so, um, I give you my pledge that that will happen at the next quarter. Well, as long as I don't have to have put it on the agenda, otherwise it'll be September. Okay, so thank you, Diane. Yes.
Hi, I'm Kitty Conley, a living Cambria, and I'm the executive director of the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve. I want to thank everyone. Coming out to, to support the ranch. Many of you are here for that. Let me begin by saying how touching it was to know that someone finally reviewed the documents on our website. For a long time, it seemed like we posted our annual reports in nine nineties and no one ever looked at them. So it was encouraged to see them being read and taken seriously. Now, to the heart of the matter, when CCSD significantly cut the ranch budget, FF RP last year, FF RP was alarmed. Not because we wanted to dictate how CCSD should manage its finances, but because CCSD has a legal obligation to fund and maintain the ranch. That's not our opinion. It's a responsibility baked into the public ownership and stewardship of the land. At the same time, FF RP has consistently stepped up as a partner. We've respected the boundary between, between our two budgets, but the truth is, we've been helping carry CCSD's load for many years. Over the last five years alone, FF RP has invested one hundred dollars more, one hundred, one hundred dollars, one hundred thousand dollars. More than, than CCSD has put into the ranch in terms of contracts and materials. That's in addition to the eight hundred thousand that we raised and spent on an ADA compliant boardwalk. But FF RP is not a government agency with stable tax revenues. Some years we receive a generous request, other years the market drops and our reserves take ahead. We rely on community goodwill and unpredictable donations. People show their love of the ranch through gifts, large and small. If CCSD were willing to actively engage as a true partner, rather than assume our support is guaranteed regardless of its own investment. It would unlock even greater support and long-term benefit for the ranch. FF RP has the community's trust. We have donors ready to contribute. We bring volunteer labor expertise and deep roots in Cambria. We can only do so much alone and we shouldn't have to. Imagine what we could accomplish together if CCSD simply met its obligations and recognized FF RP not as a fallback, but as a strategic ally. Path forward isn't to reduce CCSD's commitment, it's to leverage ours more effectively by rebuilding mutual trust and shared responsibility. Let's not miss the ranch by treating it as if it's someone else's burden. It belongs to all of us. And the legal and financial responsibility starts with CCSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next person? Okay.
I think you were calling for people, but it was-
Yes, I was.
Hi, my name's Mark Larson. I have no association with, uh, FF RP. I'm not on the board or anything.
Mark Larson?
Larson. Good to meet you.
Okay.
But here's my association with FF RP is typified by this dog. Uh, because my responsibility is to fill containers with dog bags and that's the extent to which I know about. How FF RP is being managed and administered right now. Uh, I must had a very good judge say to me, Mr. Larson, he said, standing quaking in front of him, lecturing. Said, Mr. Larson, don't come to me with your problems. He said, come to me with your solutions. We've heard all about problems all morning long, since ten oh two, it's been problems, problems, problems. Well, let me suggest to you that the best way to come up with a solution for the problem is to start here. What is this thing? It's a contract. It's a contract between who? It's a contract between CCSD on the one hand and FF RP on the other hand. I've heard an hour's worth of talking about the problems, but I haven't heard anybody talking about how to go about solving them. This is a good place to start solving problems. Okay? Second, I wanted to point out to you that when contracts are going bad, when they're sort of headed off. In their own direction and you can't seem to pull the parties together to reach your agreement. There's a mechanism that provides for that, that the law provides for that. And that's something called mediation. What you good folks should think about doing, I suggest to you, is take a look at the contract. Talk about where we can find agreement and let's also talk about where there's points of disagreement. That can be the subject of bringing the parties closer together, not farther apart. Because this could devolve into a, a horrible situation. We're not there now. Let's not get there. Let's spend the money, take the time, sit down with a mediator. One group sits in one room, other groups sits in another room, and there's somebody that shuttles back and forth. And that person probably gonna pay a lot per hour for whoever that is because he has to be skilled. He has to know the documents just like all of us do.
He or she.
He or she. You're absolutely correct. And she must make, must make certain that there's a basis for finding commonality and consensus. That's my prayer for this problem. Let's find commonality. Let's find where there's bases for agreement. And let's get this thing wrapped up. Don't let it be a problem. It just sort of festers and lives on its own energy. No, let's come up with a solution. Let's mediate this problem and come to a happy ending.
Thank you. Jane, next person? Okay. Hi, Ellie, come on up.
We have a sneaking spot.
Morning. My name is Ellie Eder. I am indeed a friend of this league, which is, I'm also a resident of Cambria, California. Feel like I live in Never Neverland, so I'm a fan of Cambria as well. I think you can't be a true fan of one without being a fan of the other. I've, I've done some work trying to do, I, I volunteer a lot with the ranch. Um, and in doing so, I've, I've looked at other studies. I've had people give me information. I'd like to point out that the ranch, well, it seems like it costs a lot of money and indeed it does. We bring a lot to this town. We are an asset to this town. Um, that, you know, it seems like we haven't got real handle on the budget and how much it really costs and how much we pay for it. But what I do know is that, uh, at one point at the, at the ranch where we said, um, gee, how many people actually walk? And nobody really knew. So we did take it upon ourselves and, and the, the ranch spent the money. To put up counters. There's counters all over the entrances to the ranch. They're not cameras, they're counters and they count how many visitors we have. In the first rolling twelve months, four hundred and forty thousand people walked down the ranch. Seems incredible. Now, a lot of those people are local. Uh, but every time we have somebody come on the ranch, something happens. We also know that, um, you all know where the shop is. I hope you all. Frequent, frequent. I see you on Fridays. What we also know is that, um, somewhere between sixty-five and seventy-five percent of people who are coming to that shop are coming from out of town. We, when people come in, we say hello, welcome to the ranch. Um, are you familiar with the ranch? We tell them the story, where are you from? Uh, sixty to seventy-five percent of those people come from out of town. So we did some, some, I did some poking around on the internet to see how much money does a person tend to spend when they come to our town? From someplace else. And, um, that's about three hundred dollars a day. And while it certainly doesn't go to the ranch coffers or to CCSD's coffers, taxes are associated with that. And, um, there's tourist tax, there's sales tax, a portion of which ultimately comes back to this town. We, we've helped produce money for this town. The other figure that I looked at was to see what our housing values are. And that look, let's compare ourselves to Morro Bay, our closest neighbors, similar to us in many respects. And they have some, some advantages that we do not. They have way more medical care and may way more shopping opportunities. They have a more usable beach. The only difference, so those differences would make Morro Bay. Real estate worth more than our real estate. But what we have that they don't have is we have a four hundred and thirty-seven acre preserve in this town. And people come here repeatedly to come. And we know that, uh, I live at the price per square foot housing in Cambria versus Morro Bay. And ours is ten to twenty percent higher than Morro Bay.
Ellie, could you summarize? Cause you're three month, three minutes.
So what I'd just like to say is that, um. The saving of this ranch twenty-five years ago profoundly saved this community forever. And we, we need to hang on to that and make it even better. But what I'm saying is the ranch appears to, is, is more than just. A burden financially. It's also a significant contribution.
Thank you. Next. Yes, sir.
Morning.
Good morning.
Scott, members of the committee and the staff present. I'm Crosby Swartz, so a Cambria resident. We can all agree that the general fund is hard pressed. Mean the funding demands are very important to CCSD responsibilities. However, reading the agenda package for this item today applies that the maintenance expenses for the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve are significant cost of the problem. Let's look at the numbers. Twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, facilities and resources. Fiscalini Ranch Preserve Maintenance and Affair Budget line is approximately sixteen thousand dollars. In comparison, total twenty, twenty-five, twenty twenty-six general fund budget is approximately four million dollars. In other words, a ranch maintenance budget is less than half a percent of the general fund budget. Even if the district reduced its funding for ranch maintenance to zero, which is not recommended, that would not solve the general fund limitations. As you know, Friends of Fiscalini Ranch contributes to ranch maintenance with dollars and volunteer hours. Dollars come from donations from citizens and groups who wish to support the ranch directly. Asking FF RP donors to contribute more subsidized than CCSD general fund may not be a popular solution. We recommend focusing on implementing the special assessment to fund the important Cambria fire environment needs. Fire department is allocated approximately seventy-five percent of the general fund amenities. Fix the fire department funding problem. You will be able to probably support Fiscalini Ranch Preserve's needs. Thank you.
Me too. Next. Okay, Laura, come on up. I'm sorry if I'm. Calling some of you by your first.
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, Lower Swartz, Cambria, there's any, uh, mine's not, I'm not gonna read it. It's not. Exactly well prepared, but I want to take a little different angle at it. Okay, Fiscalini Ranch was. Uh, I, I would say that the Coastal Conservancy of California donated seven hundred and fifty, seven million five hundred thousand. To the purchase of the ranch. Okay. And they, and they've also donated a lot of other money. Uh, for environmental purposes within Cambria. Okay. After giving seven millions and a half, I think their. Ideas have to be respected and take, take care of these things. The Cali- California Coastal Conservancy, I'm not good at public speaking, as you know. Okay, the California Coastal Conservancy is the sister of the Coastal Commission. Okay, they work together, one finances the other. This town is dependent upon the Coastal Commission to get their permit for the EWS. Now, if you don't take care of the California Coastal Conservancy and their wishes after giving seven and a half million dollars to buy the ranch. If you can't take care of something. After it was given to you, they've also given so much more money to the other lands that some of our staff hates. They are the ones that gave seven hundred and fifty thousand for those lands that are not respected. The Coastal Conservancy has also given millions of dollars for the bridges, some of the bridges and over. I had a letter here from two thousand eleven when they were very upset at the, at the, uh, CCSD. And there's been a, a real fight against funding anything in Cal- in Cambria anymore. Because of lack of cooperation. So we spent the seven million dollars plus the five hundred thousand dollars. To draw up the plan and to build the bluff trail. So take care of the Fiscalini. It brings, like I said, it brings so much to this town. It's been given to us and take care of it. It is a priority. Fire department is a priority, water is a part, is a priority, but also. The open spaces and the beauty of this place and what it does for it is a priority, as you can see all the people here. So please take care of it and figure out a way. Does need to be funded. Do it jointly. Don't pick on the Fiscalini people. They're all volunteers except for maybe one or two. They don't have high salaries. They don't have all kinds of benefits. So help them out instead of fighting with them. And the thing is too, their donors could go away. If you make it look like we're just subsidizing the CCSD, the FF RP people are trusted and liked.
Can you summarize real quick? Your three minutes is up.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Who else? Yes, sir. Scott.
Oh, my God, first names, staff.
I know.
I'm Scott Anderson. Um, I am a Cambria resident and two things occur to me after hearing what I heard today. One is we're all here over half a percent of not included number. So it does seem like we ought to be able to figure this out through negotiation. Uh, the second thing is, it occurs to me after hearing today's disclosure that the Fiscalini Ranch does not adhere to the fire standards. We've all just been asked to adhere to as of July one. They're out of compliance on their own land. And we're the people at risk.
Thanks. That was only twenty-five seconds, so. Okay, who's next? Yes, sir.
John Nixon, a Cambria resident.
Hi, John.
Hi, and member of the board of Fiscalini Ranch, Friends of Fiscalini Ranch Preserve. Twenty-five years ago, this community came together and established through great donations or pointed out in fundraising locally. The Fiscalini Ranch Preserve and proudly the CCSD became the, the owner of the property and. And the predecessor, but now Friends of Fiscalini Ranch Preserve, um, as protector of the conservancy of the easement. And protector of the ranch in partnership with CCSD. I, I want to just reinforce, reinforce some of what has been said. That we, I think FF RP has perceived a deterioration of communication and partnership and collaboration. But this money we're talking about, you know, the difference between fifteen, sixteen thousand and fifty thousand, as several point out, is really nothing. It is simply symbolic, that decrease of the deterioration of the relationship. And I, I don't have an answer to the fiscal challenges this community faces through CCSD or for the ranch. But I know we, we can't attempt to meet those challenges unless we do it together. And, um, let's, let's, uh, restore the enthusiasm and commitment that exists to twenty-five years ago. Uh, for the preservation and improvement of the greatest asset, natural asset this community has, the Fiscalini Ranch. And, uh, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Nixon. Okay, I just want you to know that if we were in a board meeting, I would not let you continue to applaud, but here it's. All right, who's next? We we have all of your written comments, they are posted and.
Go on. I would like to say.
Yeah, that's okay. And we also have copies of them here, just to let you know that people have reviewed them too. Yes.
My name's Jo Ellen Butler, I was here when you saved the ranch. I was here through the management plan, was part of the management plan. I worked as a C C S D general manager and board member for years and years and years in this year of cooperation. And it would be wonderful to see that happen again. Thank you.
Next. Is there anybody online? Okay, Christine, Ms. Heinrichs, welcome.
Yes, good morning, thank you for letting me speak. I support the many speakers who have called for cooperation and a more coordinated, better relationship with the district staff who have been the main speakers presenting this. I support Crosby and his his suggestions for funding funds and for making the point that this is, in fact, a small amount of money that would make a huge difference. The staff members who are making these recommendations do not live in Cambria and they lack the commitment that Cambrians who are attending this meeting today have to the Fiscalini Ranch. The point about the fire equipment and how much this is going to cost, I think these are are decisions that are yet to be made. We, although of course, equipment becomes obsolete, but we do have fire trucks that only respond to a few fires a year. And it's, I think it needs to be examined how important it is to replace these. And if in fact, it costs so many millions of dollars to do this, perhaps it is time for Cambria to consider to consider contracting with Cal Fire rather than attempting to maintain a fire department, which apparently, according to the general manager, we cannot afford to do. We also have the issue of the endless funding of the non-functional emergency water supply project, which seems to qualify for any kind of funding. There are now new biological studies after hundreds of thousands of dollars have been spent on past studies, which were never found adequate. I I think that there are ways that we can find to fund Fiscalini Ranch and to continue to support this gem in our community. It's it's just hard to imagine that the the Cambria district would not fully support this wonderful facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heinrichs. Anybody else online? Ms. Dickerson.
Yes, thank you, Chair Scott. I I have to be very blunt here. And I'm going to say that I cannot understand what is or what has been taking place within the confines of the C C S D and what the board continues to allow to take place and expect the public to swallow. And this is a huge one. The ranch is a crown jewel, not only in Cambria, but along the central coast of of California. It is, as Ms. Etter mentioned, a huge tourism draw. It brings the folks that come there, I walk it all the time. People love the ranch. People love to help with work on the ranch. But for this C C S D, because of a measly fifteen thousand that this general manager has brought to our attention. And by the way, we've never had a general manager who has brought this to the attention. Or Director Gray, I will point out, who in a meeting in April of twenty four, subject discussion and consideration of the report and recommendation of the Finance Committee, revenue enhancement in the general fund. And there were three items that were identified in order to raise the general fund. One incorporation, two ranch maintenance taken over by another entity, and three, a new or increased increased fire assessment. I think the problem we have is the general manager and the board's willingness to go along with every demand that he makes. I totally agree with Ms. Heinrichs, we need to look at Cal Fire, I've been saying that for twenty years. I'm sick and tired of hearing about the needs of the fire department. Look at their, look at their reports. Look to see how many fires they put out a year and who's here to help them, Cal Fire. We have two fire stations in this town for fifty seven hundred people. What is, this is shocking, what is happening. And if you want a revolt in this town, keep going the way you're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hein, Ms. Dickerson. Okay. Anyone else online?
Yeah.
Be careful.
Yeah.
Do you want to, do you want to make public comment? We still have a couple more. Okay. Okay, Dr. Benhausen.
Thank you, President Scott. I want a little explanation of what the meaning is of the phrase quote core essential unquote in the staff report. They refer to the fire department and water and sewer as core essentials or essential when in a singular, but don't say what they mean. What it definitely means is that the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve is excluded from that. Now, I want to know what the core essentials are when you pay attention to the original contract between the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve or the East West Ranch and C C S D. I want to know what the meaning is of core essential when you pay attention to the volunteer work that has been done by the Fiscalini Ranch Preserve, et cetera. In other words, you have a very important claim made by C C S D in the staff report for this meeting about core essentials. But the only definition is Fiscalini Ranch is excluded from that. Why? Why is not Fiscalini Ranch included in one of the basic tasks of open space and and resources? I want to know, let me repeat that, which was somewhat unclear. I want to know, is Fiscalini Ranch Preserve a core essential part of the work of C C S D? I would say that the past twenty two years since the signing of the contract would say yes. I would say the basic minimal budgetary requirement, requirement and commitment would say yes. In the past three years, I'm not so certain that Fiscalini Ranch Preserve is a core essential element. And I think this needs looking at perhaps through the mediation that was suggested early on in the public comment. That sounded like a wise decision to me because you will get the most efficient and effective cooperation between Fiscalini Ranch Preserve and the Cambria Community Services District. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benhausen. Yeah, I'm I'm going to leave that question to our next steps rather than because I think you did a good job in saying that in the documentation that we have, it it indicates that the ranch is not core essential. So I'm going to leave it at that for now. Hey, anybody else online? Dennis Ducek, Mr. Ducek.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for having me speak. I'm a Cambria resident and also a member, a contributor to the Friends of the Fiscalini Ranch since my wife and I moved here two years ago. We live right next to the Fiscalini Ranch, we love the ranch, it's 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 an amazing place and it is a jewel. The the East West Ranch Public Access and Resource Management Plan was brought into being in April of two thousand and three. And no, the ranch is not being adequately maintained or adequately funded. Is that a fault of the current staff? Absolutely not. Current staff are doing an amazing job here. I I look out the window and I can see that. The Forest Health Grant will be a big help when it comes through, that'll help definitely. That will that will get to some of the main four items that were identified in the twenty twenty, two thousand and three document. And some of those have been discussed today, others have not. In that original document, the it it said one of the short term, some of the short term activities, actions that were going to be taken were Santa Rosa Creek West Bank stabilization was was to be done. Vegetation Management Plan was to be put into effect, removal of non-native plants on the east side was to be taken care of. And then later it talks about the fact that these activities would go on in perpetuity. So so what happened right about that same time? What was it that happened twenty five years ago? Well, what happened was the moratorium on building in Cambria. And that moratorium ended a funding source that Cambria had that it was counting on and there was never a plan put in place to provide the funding that 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 small amount of growth would provide. And because that happened, the pie that was discussed earlier got smaller. And just like, like when I go to Lynn's, I don't want a small piece of pie, I want a bigger pie. Particularly if it's a lot of. But the point is that we need to recognize that if we're going, that we never did anything here at Cambria to to make up for the fact that that funding source was wrong. And now here we are, twenty three, twenty two years later, realizing that there's a problem. And mercifully, we have Matthew and the and the staff.
Ms. Mr. Ducek, could you just summarize real quickly?
Absolutely. When when the pie, when 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 people are fighting over the pie, you don't have to just fight, get a bigger pie.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else online?
No.
Okay. Did you want to say something? Oh. Sure.
Okay. My name is Greg McGill, I'm a fire captain here.
Why don't you come, Ray?
Oh, sorry. I'm a fire captain here, as you see, I'm dressed in my clothes I prefer to be, I I love the agriculture, I love the ranch. I'm not here to say one thing or the other on the finances, I'm just a fire captain who loves the agriculture industry more than firefighting. As a fire department, we do run eleven hundred calls this year, yes, they're not, they're not all fires, obviously ninety nine percent of them are medical calls, that's what we're here to do is provide care. I encourage the board to to look at Cal Fire, one hundred percent. I am confident that it will be much more expensive to go with Cal Fire. But one thing I could say on defense of this department is you get local men and women that work here, not one of us lives outside of this county. I live fifteen minutes up the road off Old Creek Road, next to the San Luis Obispo County Conservancy, and I love that ranch, I grew up on that ranch. Where I'm going with this is if we're going to do that, make sure we're doing a good comparison that Cal Fire is coming with ALS paramedics like you get here and that they're constantly in this district. I've only worked here about seven months, I've had five vehicle accidents on Highway one and Highway forty six and I have been on first on scene to every single one of those accidents with paramedics. We have a local member here who was on, in a bicycle accident, got hit by a car up off Highway one, San Simeon Creek Road. Cal Fire was yelling kayukas. I work with Cal Fire, I love Cal Fire, we get along great with each other. But just know, we do love this community as a fire department, we we do a lot for this community, we love being involved in this community. So that's all I really have to say, is we're not here to be enemies, we we enjoy the ranch, we go exercise on the ranch, I love to see the deer on the ranch. I love what the ranch provides for this community, but we're not enemies, just know, if you're going to look at Cal Fire, please do it with the best regard because your level of service probably will deteriorate on the medical side of the job. And I've been doing this twenty years, I can go private sector or get a job anywhere else, so if you take my job, not a problem, I'll buy you another one.
Anybody else? Yes, sir. We might not have any time. Then I have to.
Yeah, I'm Mark Webber and I live in Cambria. And I don't know anything, but I do know that it seems like we're fighting over money. And so the logical thing seems to me, we have to figure out how to raise it. So I mean, a couple of ways that I can think of this, an idiot, you know, private grants, public grants, where I hate to use the T word and offend anybody, taxes. I mean, I think we all value Fiscalini. I think even the C C S D does despite, you know, what people are saying, I think we all love Fiscalini. And I think we need to really start thinking about how we're going to come up with funding. We're going to write more grants, we're going to apply for state grants, federal grants, I know it seems unlikely these days, but I mean, we should do what we can to raise funding and I think taxes is one way, I don't know if that's what it talked about.
Yeah, and assessment. That that may be something coming out of the ad hoc.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. We have someone, another one online?
Yes, Raider Randy.
Raider Randy is like, like.
It's Cheryl, Cheryl Mc. I don't know, he got on my computer. I live at the three hundred block of Waymouth. I see Cal Fire constantly going up to San Simeon, going on to calls. So if the Hearst Castle would have their fire department reinstated, maybe those calls would not be going on. And another thing, maybe there needs to be an audit of the funds that have been appropriated to the ranch. Maybe you need to go back and re-audit that particular line item and where the money has gone. I know if Carlos was around, this would not be happening.
Cheryl, Cheryl.
What?
We're not going to start talking.
I'm not, I'm done with you.
Okay, thank you. She's coming, me. Anyone else? Okay. Okay, all right, well, good, we have a lot of other things to talk about, so. Oh. Mr. McLeeheny, did you want to just, I'm sorry, look at your little hand up there.
It's a small hand?
Yeah.
I I I think the conversation has been good and robust, I think there's been a lot of things that have been left unanswered, you know, I think there's a lot of passion amongst the F F R P. I have some some disagreement in terms of the fact that our ad hoc, we had a couple meetings with Ms. Conley and at least one with the chairperson to have these conversations, so that so that was open. The water reclamation facility has nothing to do with the general fund and our allocation towards the ranch. For the F F R P to exercise their right to take over the West Ranch, that none of those responses mentioned that. No one's mentioned how we close the financial gap from the C C S D side. When we talk about the division of the pie, all that has been kind of unresponded to. As far as I'm the only GM that's ever brought this up or done this, I'm also maybe the only GM that's ever balanced the budget for facilities and resources. So I don't, I don't know how to to respond to some of this. I'm willing to work with anybody, I'm willing to come back to the table. But from a financial perspective, the district does not want to end up like San Simeon. And if anybody wants to take a look at where San Simeon is going and the potential for us to eventually be a San Simeon, we have to look seriously at our budget. And I'll close with the fact that we are looking at a benefits assessment for the fire department at the fire committee.
And I'll close with the fact that we are looking at a benefits assessment for the fire department at the fire committee level. Um, that's not an answer to the ranch, and I'll be honest, because when those funds are dedicated towards the fire department, that doesn't mean you get to take the money that was previously dedicated for the fire department and move it to somewhere else. You know, that's not really the answer. If we're already struggling with the fire department and we do a benefits assessment assessment for the fire department, those are the monies that we need to continue fire department operations. If we're gonna look at an assessment for the ranch, that's something different.
That's what we're talking.
Yeah, so so and I I there was a public comment about a fire department benefits assessment as if that would relieve the stress on um, the Fiskelini Ranch. So um, with that, happy to sit down. We're happy to continue to work with the friends of the Fiskelini Ranch, but ultimately, I'm gonna stand by our staff report. That states that, you know, they have a six point six million dollar purse and we are struggling just to maintain basic operations within its district. So I'll turn it over to the committee for for action and to you, um, Chairwoman Scott. Um, but you know, s- staff is trying to be open as transparent as possible, and you're gonna see the books here on the next two agenda items. So we're not hiding anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Burkey, you said you wanted to make a statement?
Yeah, um. Thank you, guys. Uh, I appreciate all of you guys being here and I really. Oh, I'm sorry.
There you go.
As you know, I'm Chief Burkey, I'm Fire Chief of Cambria. Um, I uh, I I absolutely respect our friends of this community ranch. I think you guys are doing a great job. And I I admire the um, amount of passion that goes into the ranch and I admire the 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 increase um, uh, relationship that we wanna have with with everyone, but not only just with the fist friends of the fiscal ranch, but also with just our community in general. Yeah, absolutely. And so um, my worry is not the ranch. I'm not worried about the ranch at all. And I I obviously except for fire protection. My worry is about um, the fire department and uh, the fire protection here in Cambria. And uh, and I'm trying to be as uh, non-emotional as possible, but I do get emotional when I talk about this because it's very geared to my heart. I love the guys that I work with. I've been here for a long time. I've been told many times that I don't have any right to speak about the community of Cambria because I wasn't born here. I didn't, but I live here. And that's very insulting to me because um, I was born, I was born uh, right over in North County of uh, of San Luis Obispo County. My dad used to bring me here after church every Sunday. Used to go to the chuck wagon and I used to go to this little army soldier store when I was when I was a wee little kid. And so um, to say that this community doesn't mean anything is a very um, hurtful statement to me personally. The ranch is another thing that's very close to me. Again, um, I really, I do care about this community and I do care about the ranch. But more so, I care about the guys that I work with and I care about their service that they're providing to me. Without them, this community would not function at all. I'm telling you right now, I've been on the calls, I've been working with them, I've been here for over almost two decades now. And working beside them and seeing this level of service that they provide is unparalleled. Unparalleled, what what they provide this community is outstanding. Having been a part of that, I can, I'm speaking to myself too, but however, on the other side of it, when we talk about funding and we're talking about what they're being paid, I was one of those people, our general manager was one of those people as well. It it's it's a shame. It's a shame what we're paying our firefighters, our fire captains, our fire engineers. When we talk about talking assessment or or any sort of money that's needed for the fire department, that's just something to sustain what we have already. I've said this before, you're getting Michelin star restaurant food for McDonald's prices, and I mean that because Cal Fire does not provide Ocean Rescue up in this area. They don't provide Cliff Rescue, they don't provide paramedics, they don't provide any of those services that the next closest units from Morro Bay or Temple Town come. That's that's how far away they are. We have them right here in our county and we need to start paying for them. So when I talk about the service that we're getting and the Michelin servers in McDonald's, that's exactly what's happening. We're we're paying our guys. Our fire captain has just got spoken, the three that are about to walk in, our three firefighters that are about to walk in. They can go to any other department in our county and get paid more than they get paid up here. I don't know how to justify that. I don't know how to justify that, and I want my guys to understand that we're not talking about extraordinary extraordinarily high amount of money. We're not trying to get these guys to be top of the line. House City is one of the highest in our county, San Luis Obispo City, they battle back and forth. They're the two highest in our county. We're not trying to talk about that. I'd love them to get that money because I think they deserve that, but that's not, that's not feasible, that's not reasonable. What I'm trying to get them aid is something to where their their values. Right now, they're not valued. That's the way I see it. I don't see them being paid to the to the level that they need to be paid at to value what services that they're actually providing this community. My time's up?
No, your time's not up because you don't get time, but um, got a lot of stuff to do.
Absolutely. And so I'm I'm gonna get to the point here. Um, I I've said it before and and I I I the future is very expensive for for the CCSD, very expensive. Um, and we've, the general managers talked about a lot of the infrastructure needs and those are not um, you know, uh, lost on me at all, but I get very concerned again when we start, it's the same statement I made with the skate park and it's nothing against these individual entities. I I I absolutely adore them. However, we need to start with the basics. We need to start the fundamentals because without them, none of this other stuff really matters.
Thank you so much. Hey, anybody else online?
No.
Anybody else in house? Okay. All right, so um, this is, this agenda item was discuss and review the historical financial contribution. So there isn't a decision that comes with this agenda item uh, for this committee, but there will be decisions for the previous two agenda items that we have to do. Yeah, okay, all right. So let's go ahead and go to Agenda Item four A, as we have our illustrious financial wizard here who um, can go ahead and start that agenda. Okay, so uh, yeah, just a minute. Could you kind of be a little quiet, please?
It's not the budgets. The last, the last, the first one is yes, the final um, fourth quarter. And then the budget is the
Thank you, Chief Burkey. Can we be quiet, please? Yeah, this, our owl here is having a hard time making things up, so if we can just keep the conversation down now.
Right, so this is Agenda Item number four A, and this is review of the fourth quarter budget report and staff recommendations. Um, so this is, I think we've only been doing the fourth quarter report for a couple of years, and so this summarizes um, the fiscal activity for um, the fiscal year of twenty four and twenty five. This is our unaudited uh, financial, we will be doing an audit this year where everything will be finalized.
And we audit every?
Yes, we do audit every year, but I just wanna put that out there. Um, the board approved two budget adjustments during the fourth quarter, and that was the EV charging station installation out at the utility site and um, the EV tractor for both uh, water and wastewater apartment. Um, our CIP list is included, which has all activity updated through the fiscal year, so you can kind of see what projects, where the projects stand and what we've spent so far. Um, and I think with that, in this committee, we've done this every quarter, so I'm not gonna go over those reports in detail, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Those committee questions.
President Scott?
Oh, yes, sir.
I hate to rewind, um, but there was an action item on four C in terms of approved recommendations to the board of directors. So I don't know if you want to continue that item or take action.
Well, I want that um, to be part of what happens in four B. That's okay.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
You're right. I'm wrong. Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, so.
Yes.
So being that this was the first time I think that I just.
Did you guys close the door?
I'm on, I'm on page thirteen. Um.
Is it thirteen of the?
Thirteen of the entire package. And so um, there were a couple of things, the um, well, there's a whole lot of things, but we don't have nearly the time to go over everything.
You do whatever you need.
Okay.
Because we can extend it.
Okay, good, then I will. Okay, so uh, when we're on um, category three of the general fund there and for the period activity and the fiscal activity for the year. Now, is this a portion that that's been put there relative to the investment that it's part of, it's part of the interest now that we just, no?
That is not interest. Uh, the interest for the general fund remains just in the admin department because the general fund is investment is a whole thing.
It was true.
Yeah, this forty five thousand in particular that happened in June was for the mutual aid. So we sent the fire department out.
This is reimbursement. Okay, so got it. So this is for down south?
Yes.
Okay.
Does everybody understand this? Okay.
Um, and then on um, under category, the property taxes, the fourth of the items there. Um, for the, for the um, and this is a commonality that I'm gonna have, there's a bunch of these. Um, and I when I discovered late yesterday that we were gonna be trying to do this all today, I tried to link and connect the the dots here. But on a number of the, on a number of the budget items, when we get to the final fiscal number, I've identified the ones that that are somewhat staggering, like in on that fourth line relative to weed assessment. It's a hundred and eighty two percent of what we thought was going to be coming in, so we we received a whole lot more money. And whether it's a, it's an incoming flow or an expense item, when there's something like that that jumps out at me, I'm always curious to know if these are one offs, like we we're gonna get that one time and then it's done, so it doesn't travel forward into the next fiscal budget, or is it a is it something that we need to anticipate, like an expense where now we have some other thing that's causing this to be considerably higher? And so what I tried to do is real quickly is I tried to take and walk through the ones that had those bumps and see if next year's, next fiscal year's budget reflects the the um, more of what the earlier budgets initial start was, or if it reflects the item that um, or whatever caused that, that fall.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever caused that fall, to take and drive it over the top. So I don't know if we want to, there's.
Well, let her, let her answer the question because there's a real good answer.
Well, there's a lot, but this this is, this question has a lot of fingers.
Okay.
Okay.
I I would say it depends on the line item. So I have a specific answer for weed abatement.
Yeah.
And I'll have a specific answer for each one.
And that's fine.
And it's different for other, for ones. You want me to answer the weed abatement? Okay, so weed abatement, um, we used a new contractor last year. I was estimating, I knew it was gonna be a little more expensive at the given time that I'm doing the budget. I don't know how many lots are gonna fail or pass, and I don't know what the cost is going to be.
Okay.
Per lot to, you know, so I bumped it up to a hundred thousand estimating what it might be. The thing with that, if you look down, there's expense that offsets it at any given time. It's supposed, should be a net zero. It doesn't net zero every year because the revenue is coming from um, lots that are placed on the tax roll as well as lot owners can come in and and pay their bill. Um, so it's not always equating to exactly what's hap, the expense that's going out, like right now, we're gonna be paying the vendor for the lots third and twenty five, twenty six.
Right.
But the money coming in could be from last, is gonna be from last year's one, so there's.
And may come in with property tax money.
Yeah, it does come in with, it only, yes, yes. Yes, it comes in with property tax money and the majority of it does, and so.
But it's not a property tax.
No, I understand. No, it's 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 a fee that they're having to pay.
So um, I think that I kept it at a hundred thousand for twenty five, twenty six without look jumping. I don't wanna jump all the way down there right now, but um, hoping that less lots would fail and less lots did fail. So will will we be with budget for that one? But we do have a corresponding expense um, that we have to pay out, that really that revenue should be covered in that expense.
Okay. Yeah, it should be a wash. Should be a wash. Okay, more than us.
Yes.
Okay, so then on the, on the salaries line item, the second one down has to do with the overtime. Now, um.
It is raised.
We lost. It is raised and they're doing, okay. Because I know that we lost, we lost the three guys that were covered by the grant. And that, that means that somebody else, not all of the time, but some of the time, somebody else is gonna be on overtime to have to cover that watch.
Well, now that we're running, and Chief's not in here, but now that we're running a three O, my understanding is yes, anytime anyone is out, we will have to cover with overtime. Um, before, we could, when it was four O, someone could go out on vacation and we could still run with the three O. So this year, that's one of the reasons, is you can see the overtime went up, but we had uh, we had we have firefighters who go out on leave. We had a firefighter out on leave. An engineer out on leave for the majority of the, for a part of the year, I should say. Um, so you know, overtime is something that uh, the chief and I spoke at length about trying to come up with a good way to estimate it, um, and what that cost would be when someone, when he is approving things like vacations and obviously sick times or or medical leaves, we have no control over, but um, we did bump it up this year.
Okay, yeah, I've in the, in for Bravo, I have marked the ones that look, but it it's really I'm constrained to to take and actually have this all spread out so that I could show you what I did on the dining room table. Okay, so, so then um.
Supplies and services. Lots of overages.
Yeah, this is on fourteen. Oh, all, all truth be told, the two of us said.
We're neighbors.
Yeah, we're neighbors, and so.
Well, don't violate the Brown Act.
We didn't, we didn't invite anybody else to play.
Except my dog, that's it.
But anyhow, because um, Chile hadn't gone through this once before.
Right. Um, that's fine.
Yeah, just, just put that probably. So we're just kind of speaking as as one.
Okay.
Yeah, the um, so we had with the uh, the M and R on the for the fire department over the course of the year had about doubled on that one. The uh, the next line down, which isn't a whole lot of money, but it tripled. And um, and the next line down for the vehicles, again, it was um, seventy five percent higher than what, than what was originally budgeted. I'm guessing the same thing holds true. You're, you are looking at these, we'll make this quicker. You are looking at this one offs and not carrying those forward. And if it's something new that we have to do, you are rolling in additional funds.
Yeah, so for example, like vehicles, I know that they had some issues with the fire engine, and that's why these discussions about looking into replacing the fire engine have come up because there was a lot of maintenance issue that we weren't expecting. When it's a vehicle, we can, we have to do it, right? It's, it's So I mean, um, you'll see, and I don't know if the cost just had gone up, the same thing with supplies and resources, you know, the vehicles were just really expensive this year. A lot of stuff was breaking down and maintenance had to be done on them.
At one point, we didn't even have a fire engine. We had to borrow.
Yeah, we had to borrow a fire engine at a point, so um, Chiefs, we give you the specifics of what happened, but yes, um, I spend a lot of time with Chief going over. But yes, um, I spent a lot of time with chief going over this budget, trying to assess, okay, this was just a one off repair. We don't anticipate this to break down, but let's increase it a little bit because obviously, you know, there's a little more maintenance that's needed.
Printing forms and this pro service miscellaneous.
So the printing forms are because of the new, um. What did fire chief post, um, forms that he did with the committee?
Oh, with, yeah, with three neighbors.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
So that was a one off.
Uh, no, we're, he's doing that every year. So we increased it for fifty five, twenty seven.
It's a new program.
It's a new program, yes, that we weren't, we, was not happening when we budgeted.
And then this pro service miscellaneous, eight thousand to thirty six thousand.
What page?
Fourteen, it's the last item before budgeted.
Okay, so that, yeah, so if you look though, we did do a budget adjustment for Esri, so part of that is Esri.
Tell her what Esri. Just tell her what name, you don't have to say.
It is a software that we use to do lot, um, management. And so with water, wastewater and fire, we'll use it. David knows probably more about it than I do, but, uh, if, uh, we, um, are upgrading that system to be the same one that county uses. So it's going to help us a whole lot of things.
And it's already showed a bunch of leaks all over town.
That's.
Oh, that's, oh, sorry, there are my.
Yeah, that's something else. Yes.
I just thought it would be smart.
That budget adjustment, like we did make the budget adjustment, the board approved that in the year. Um, but it did go over and I will have to, I would, I don't know that one off the top of my head exactly what that was.
Okay, um, guys can just end at any point.
Do any fine.
Okay, so then, um, then on page fifteen.
And then there's some cost savings. There too.
Yeah, we like those.
Unless it's a, unless it's a number that's a big multiple, I'm probably going to.
And I think the, the point of this is to just see if these are one off costs or if they need to be adjusted because.
Yes.
It sounds like you.
We do look at that, yes.
You retract if that one.
Yes.
Yes, but.
I'm hoping that we don't have that, any variances. I mean, that would be the goal.
Sure. There was the one on the, on the top of page fifteen, was the, uh, the meetings, I. You know, it's not a whole lot of money. It just would grab my attention is that it's, it's two and a half times what was budgeted. So I'm assuming that something like that is going to be taken care of. Um, and then the fourth line down, the employee recognition, along the. Continue to voice my support for that because. Guys and gals need to know that we appreciate them. So I'm. Put more money in that budget. Okay, and then the last one, the F H R P, which stands for.
That's the weed abatement. So it's the common part to the revenue that we talked about in the beginning. And it would be good, maybe I should name them the same thing. So a lot of these account names have come through prior, um, to begin here. So this is where you can see we spent a hundred and ninety eight thousand. I had budgeted, I try and budget the same in the revenue and expense. So, um, we took in a hundred and eighty, so it's about a ten thousand approximately dollar difference between the revenue that we collected and the expense.
Okay, alright.
Which I was happy that it wasn't. More.
Yeah.
Ten thousand.
When, when Shelley and I were talking, we do, we, um, we came to this, where we did category eighty. And we're talking about allocated overhead and then the general fund surface. Surplus or deficit, can you just? Go over that because I wasn't able to do a good job of explaining what, um. What's happening there, especially in the general fund.
So if you look at fund oh nine, which goes down, it's administration. There's in our budget policy, all the expenses and administration are, um, allocated out to all of the different departments. And we spent a lot of time in this committee revamping, um, the allocation model. This is twenty five, twenty six will be the first year, the new model that we came up with in here. Um, so this four hundred and seventy four thousand was. The fire department's share of administration expenses. Um, you can see it's a little bit less than what we had budgeted for, and I would say that is because of cost saving. The, the expenses in the admin department, we did some kind of cost saving throughout the year. So it wasn't as high as what we had budgeted for. Um, so every department has a little bit less of overhead than was budgeted for. Um.
I, I'm a little confused about period activity versus fiscal activity. Period activity is higher than fiscal activity.
And the allocated overhead?
Report surplus deficit, the very last item.
So, so the six, the six hundred and two is adding up everything.
Right, for the period activity, we're just one quarter, correct?
Correct. So the fiscal activity, if you look at the report surplus deficit, that's taking the revenue. Minus the expenditures, that means for the whole year. That it was two thirteen, whereas for, if you look, it can be.
It can be more.
So in the period. Um. The revenue we took in was higher than the expenditures that we did just for that period.
This is.
Well, it can't, it can't be more.
We'd be in a really big deficit for the period activity. We have no revenue.
It's just misleading to say period activities, fiscal activity, and then to just have a, a number. It's like, I was, but I get it now.
That has to, because our revenues are highly, you know, time sensitive when they come in in a gush.
Yes, especially for fire.
Right.
They won't see any revenue like in our first quarter report for them. You'll see we'll be in a huge deficit. Because we don't get property taxes truly till about October.
Yeah.
Any significant non-property taxes. So there's caught cash flow, managing cash flow. Um. Sure.
Yeah.
Um, under expense supplies and services, we budgeted for fifty, came in at six oh two. Again.
So this is the summary.
Okay.
This is the summary of everything we've just went through.
You know, has that been applied to the new fiscal?
Yes.
Okay.
We've looked at it.
Oh, I.
And part of that, you know, close to a hundred thousand of that is the weed abatement, came in a hundred thousand over.
Yeah.
And that, so, um, I kind of. In my assessment, don't, I mean, that one doesn't, that's a little bit. It's a different one, but yes.
Okay, I need to interrupt here and, um, ask you all if you're okay with extending. I would say at least a half an hour. You okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, so we're done, we're on page nineteen. And it's, um. On that second line, it's, it just looks to me like the math is wrong. It was budgeted for twenty five thousand. We, we, um, or it was, it was revenue for twenty five thousand, we received twenty three five. And. Okay, it's, you received a hundred, hundred and one percent of which thought you was the three hundred and seventy one dollars was one point four eight percent. Never mind. Okay, and it answers those questions, the overtime we've already talked about. On salaries online in section fifty or category fifty.
Yeah.
So I think we're good done on nineteen.
Mrs. Facilities and Resources now.
Yes.
They're a different department.
But the, the whole issue of the overtime, if you're looking at that to see if we need to adjust it.
Yes.
Because we were, we had overspent it. Yeah. Okay, so if we scroll to page twenty. About a half dozen down, it's the, the streetlights and there's obviously something. Something materialized that there, um. The period activity was, was significant and. Well, sixteen times what we budgeted, so the. You can probably answer that question.
Well, yeah, we did the light upgrade.
Okay, so that's, so that's now all complete.
Oh, yes, all LEDs.
Okay, so now with.
And I think.
Like the year before, we had a hole that was backed into that was damaging the twos.
And it, didn't you discover that there's more lights than we had originally thought? And you know, so.
Six, thirty, seventy, oh, yeah.
So, yes.
So as, so as a procedural thing. We've, we, we essentially. Um, did we not have to take and do a budget adjustment to accommodate the sixteen thousand?
Yeah, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, well, there's eight of it.
Yeah.
But we, but it shouldn't have been sixteen?
I, I mean, I'd have to go back and look at the budget adjustment and look at what's. Was, if we just didn't ask for enough or what.
Okay.
Underestimated, I don't know, I have to go.
I know, because I know I asked for.
And the expense was, if you look, is in a different line item than where we did the budget adjustment.
Yeah. Okay, I think that budget adjustment also included when we did that street lighting, it also included the vets hall lighting. So I think some of that included the interior for the vets hall, if I'm correct.
Yes, there was a note, like adjustment for the, uh, the buildings under vets hall.
Okay, so we should see another adjustment as we go.
Yeah, great.
We should have moved, um. Let's see, so there was lights, um. The next round of that, the ranch. Facilities and whatever that acronym or abbreviation stands for, department.
Resources. So, of course, so that is the amount, the ranch, uh, we had budgeted fifteen thousand, seven hundred, and we spent twenty five thousand.
Okay. So then let me come back to that same question then, when, um. It is more just a procedural thing, when you have, when you are, when you are going to go over by. That which was about eight thousand dollars, do you? Do you have to go back and get a budget adjustment or can you just proceed forward?
The general manager has, uh, authority to approve certain things and operations and resources. If it's anything capital, it goes before the board.
Okay.
No, like, no questions asked. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
There are rules around it, but oftentimes, you know, if something's happening. Um. You know, to look and see how far are we going to go about it. I mean, we try and stay in constant communication, but, um. Yeah.
Just like, I don't know anybody that looks at it quite like the budget, kind of like I do. But if anybody did and they saw that, I would like to be able to answer their question much like you answer mine. Okay.
I, and, and again, it was probably something specific on the ranch that just had to be done.
Yeah.
And so.
But you have all the correspondence and we meant to have an audit.
Yeah, because I know those are going to be invoices for the fire break, don't leave payment, some of the stuff.
Yeah, I don't know if. Our, we get audited every semester and they don't audit us. I mean, yes, we have everything good, but. Yeah.
All right, so, so and then in the, in the, uh, that last block, the one, the small tools. And it's, I'm guessing it's just one, it could be one tool could have cost an extra six thousand dollars. That makes, that made the difference more than what I need from that one.
Multiple ones.
Yeah, yeah.
And yes, and I mean, and our intent is not to go over budget, of course, by a lot, obviously. And so that's where we will have communication about. What to do for next year while also, you know, looking at, um, and overall. Um. Obviously following our budget policy and all of that, but overall that David has done an incredible job of managing his budget and, um. There is an overall cost saving.
Sure.
In facilities and resources.
And we, we, when we create these budgets, we, there can be a little bit of, or we would expect that there would be. I would expect that there would be a little bit of wiggle room in what those amounts are. But I don't want it to be so much so that you, if you end up having a surplus year after year. And, and then that they're as bad as going over on your budget, or maybe even worse.
I like a surplus.
Yeah, but you can't, but it can't be enormous because then you're not, then it's not a budget. And now it's, then it's wag. What, what do I want? You know, it's, yeah. Yeah, I think it's, we're, I think we're on the same page. I don't want, I don't want it to the dollar. But I want it to be, to reflect close to what, I want the budget to mean something. Otherwise, why are we doing this?
I think it's the difference between an estimate and a guesstimate.
Yeah.
So a lot of these were guesstimates without, no, no, let me finish. If everything stayed status. Right, but then equipment breaks down.
Yeah.
Or there's more streetlights that need to be repaired.
Yeah.
Okay, so then on, uh, on twenty one, the streetlights show up again. As, uh. There's, um. And that general fund surplus one, guessing that's, that's, that adjustment for eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay, let's chime in, here's the one you see.
Um, I'm a little confused on this twenty four.
Okay, so let me explain this because, yeah, um, so we used to have a pros commission. And so if you look at our, our chart of accounts, you can see the zero one, the number in the middle. So zero one represents general fund, it's the fund. Then the four, three, nine, zero, zero is representative of the account. And then the number on the end sixteen is, uh, the department. So before you would have seen an O two, which was facilities and resources department. Um, the sixteen used to be our pros commission. It had its own, uh, fund.
And they used to get now a committee.
Yeah, so it's now a committee, so they don't actually get allocated, um, property taxes. Though that property tax allocation went up to facilities and resources, but we still use this. Department sixteen to run the capital projects for facilities and resources through there. So what you'll see here is the skate park. And the east ranch restroom.
Right.
So all of that is pretty much. It's all expenses. There is a little bit of revenue, but honestly, I have to fix that because that should have gone up to, um, that miscellaneous revenue. It should be up in the O two. So I'll fix that before the board.
Oh, goodie, we made a recommendation.
And I guess my posting is, and I don't know if it's on this page, but I did see it in the budget. We've already spent money to date on the skate park, even though. Nothing's been.
Correct, I spent close to. Yeah, we, we'll see, you can see in the C I P list, which I can go over with you two because that, uh, but yes, we've spent over a hundred thousand dollars on the skate.
Okay, so I'm jumping to page twenty nine. And we're talking about the interest income. Thank you very much, Denny's.
Yeah.
The, um. The, the, for the period activity, the minus hundred and thirty five thousand. You see that? Third line down, fourth line down.
Yes, because, um, so the interest income comes into admin and then I do, uh, I distribute it out to the, uh. Utilities, their portion of the interest income.
So that's where that goes.
Yes.
Because they have their own, um. Um, not general.
So we're, we're invested as a, a boat, you know, eight million or whatever we have. And then as I'm getting it, I, who, you know, I do it based upon the percentage of that. Big money goes to water and wastewater and.
Industrial expenses going the other way.
Yes.
Yes.
And they only do that at the end of June, at the end of fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to do it quarterly, but if it doesn't, yeah.
That's, I ensure this is a period active, it goes negatively. Yeah, okay, nice. Not clear size.
Same with the, uh, property tax, you can see that all comes into admin and I do do the property tax every quarter. I allocate out each department's share, which goes to water. Sorry, does not go to water, it goes to fire department, F and R, and a little bit goes to wastewater.
Okay, then, um, just before the bottom of the line, bottom of the page there, line three, the, the. Workman's comp. Now, um, I wouldn't think that the, I wouldn't think that the rates have gone up that significantly. Did we add people into that classification? The budget was at forty four hundred and ended up being thirteen thousand?
I'd have to look and see why it was so much more. That is, um. Every payroll pay period, we get a report from our payroll system that tells us how much belongs to each, um, department.
Yeah. Yeah, because the period activity is about eleven hundred dollars, which lines up with. Yeah, cause the period activity is about eleven hundred dollars, which lines up with, with that thirteen thousand figure, unlike the, what we budgeted. Um, so we.
I mean, and the salaries and benefits is a pretty, we, we look at that very closely when we budget, so I'll look at that and say, why it's.
And that, and that for the twenty five, twenty six budget, we have an appropriate.
Well, I'd have to, I'll have to look.
The answer would hopefully be yes.
It's appropriate. Um. Okay, then on page thirty, first thing that got my attention had to do with computer support and parts. Um, basically, a little more than doubling that cost, from what the adjusted amount was, or, yeah, from what the amount was. Um, did, was that relative to the, you see that, um, line zero one sixty four fifty oh nine?
Okay.
So it's twenty three thousand two four.
I think, uh, uh, we, we got the, um. I announced.
Yeah.
For the board.
What?
Sorry. But we're saving so much in.
Paper, yeah, yes, now we are no longer printing agendas.
So which line is that? The printing paper line?
You only print for fossils.
Yeah.
Okay, that was the only, that was the only thing on page thirty. Are you?
I'm good.
Okay, good. Um. On the, um. On the professional, it's, it's the fifth one down, control services miscellaneous admin department. The budget for forty five and ended up coming in about ninety. Is that a one off, or is, is that?
Exactly, I mean, I don't have an answer, I, I can't tell you off, off my head, exactly what that one is.
What page is it on thirty?
Thirty one.
Thirty one, um. And then we will, we, if there, I mean, if it was not a one off, then we would have adjusted the new budget, you know, let's say it's a new service contract we've gotten into, we did do a lot of sort of admin things as far as managing our files this year, man, um, doing different things, so I have to look and see exactly what that was for.
It's more of, it's more of not having that be reflected in the new budgets that we can, yeah. Okay, gen- general question, uh, what, what's the magnitude of, of change that's within the authority of Matt to approve an overage? Yeah, you know, like what's.
It, it depends on what classification of expense, I guess, so it's different for, for different things, so I can bring that.
It's a, it's a policy that we just approved.
Yeah, and I can't remember what those magnitudes were, what those thresholds were.
I can burn that.
I wanna say it was, I could go twenty percent above, but I could be wrong, um, obviously non-capital type expenses, but.
Yeah, operation, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Twenty percent above is the budgeted.
Which keeps it to, you know, less than, less than swag, but, yeah.
Um, it would be really hard to run the district too, I mean, cause when you have to go somewhere for the board. A lot of times, yeah.
Work, yeah.
I have a question, um, on page thirty one, provide service counsel, I would imagine that's our legal.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay, so that cost went down.
Uh, it's just less than what was budgeted, I wouldn't say it went down, I did adjust the budget number on that for twenty five, twenty six, cause I don't know what what happened with that budget number, um, but the cost has remained the same from twenty four to twenty five to twenty five, twenty six, like, they have not increased their fees. So, and that specific line item is the retainer that we pay for, um, our lawyers, so it's pretty, it's set. Every month, um, anything over a retainer amount goes to a different line.
Does it go to the one below it, provide service legal?
Yes.
Okay.
Or also our HR that we employ, which again, that one, it is more of a guesstimate, because if we have an issue, come up with an employee, it's, it's gonna cost more, so we, we try and estimate that.
Right.
There's somebody might be coming back on the market.
Yeah.
And then. Provide service miscellaneous, I love the miscellaneous category, that double?
Yeah, that was one, I don't, I'd have to look, I have to dive into that one to see exactly what can.
Very good. So then on thirty six, this one real item kind of jumped out at me, and it has to do with the wastewater fund. And the, it's the, um, adjusted budget there, that the twelve million four sixteen one forty five.
So, if you look at the original total budget column, that's the preliminary budget that you all approved. You know, we, we have been like Ju- June or something.
Yeah.
And then the current total budget is gonna reflect the encumbrance carryforwards that you're gonna see in our next staff report. And any budget adjustments that happen during the year, so that changes drastically, um, but it's mostly capital.
Okay.
Capital expenditures, cause we account for capital expenditures in the same fund that we account for our operating expenditures.
Great, okay, so I can look forward to seeing that elsewhere. Um, who's doing? Okay, on, um. I guess that makes, I find that a weak sense. So the, the items that, that show up about under fees, category forty two, um, the eleven forty one, one hundred, oh, nine thirty nine, sorry. Um, a couple of them are roughly doubled. The, um. What, did we re, did we fix something, is that? Oh, I'm sorry, this, this is still revenue. What, um, do you see those lines?
Yeah, so like the remodel impact, that is, people who have to pay fees if they wanna do remodels.
Okay, so more remodels?
Apparently, apparently people are. Do you mind their homes?
Not mine, really, okay, well, good, I'm glad they are.
Yes.
Okay. The, um, and the inspection fees kind of function off of that.
Yeah, and I probably, I would prefer to keep revenue estimates lower than, you know, bump it up, because people decided to do more remodels this year, so I, I probably didn't change that now for revenue.
Yeah, that's fine, cause those, a lot of those are gonna be one offs too.
Yes, yes.
Okay, on page forty, when we get down to the, um, back into that benefits part, now, the, the medical, that, everybody knows medical benefits are going up, except for ours. Is that, does that mean that there's, we haven't paid one of our premiums yet? Cause we were, we had budgeted for seventy six hundred dollars, and we've spent forty seven hundred dollars.
What, I, where are you?
Um, category fifty one, line, third line, yeah, third, third line. Second and third lines, actually. Yeah.
So, um. The purse care, we probably paid less, someone may have, we may have hired someone who decided not to take health benefits.
Oh.
But I will budget that they do, because if we have vacant positions, I don't know who's, if they're gonna, maybe they were a single person, so they have a lower rate than, and I budget for like a family or some, you know, I try and estimate that. So, I wouldn't say that our, um, healthcare, I'm, I'm very conservative, or I try to be with budgeting for benefits. So I don't know what someone's going to use or not use, if we are hiring new people.
Sure, they can change relations every year.
Yeah, they can, yeah.
Yeah, so that raises another question, when, when you're doing the budget, and you're taking, doing things like a medical care, do you budget at full staff, or do you budget at current staff?
I budget at full staff.
Okay, so there's like two seats empty right now, so.
So you will see. Yes.
Unless we fill them.
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. Alright, that's part of your question too.
Yes, it is. I call it conservative budgeting.
Okay. If, that's fine. The, um, the very last one, um, on, uh, learn, on, on page forty, the Limerford water, that's just, um, what, what are they doing? Why isn't there a, a, why is that, what is that you need to?
I would need to defer to my utilities, people who are not here, I, I don't know.
It's not enough money.
Dig into it, um, but I don't, I'm gonna do that right now. We're gonna have to extend again, um.
I didn't see anything for Happy Hill. Water part.
Yeah, I don't know why Limer is, is, uh, pulled out, but that would be something for Jim to answer.
And I. On page forty one. Oh, yeah, on page forty one, was budgeted for sixty seven hundred, became one eighty two thousand.
Yeah, again, I would have to ask Jim exactly why that, if they had some issues with the water meters. So, and that's maintenance of meters, so, um, they have emergencies quite often in, um, utilities throughout the year, so I'd have to dig into that one. And he's another one, we sit and go line by line, pretty in depth on this, to try and get the right number for the new year.
Um, down in that lower section on page forty one, about the third one down, the one that says M, M and R storm damage, January nineteen twenty one. What? To those, oh, I, yeah, twenty twenty one, yeah.
So that was the count that was created, um, when we had storm jam damage in twenty twenty one. And it was a way to identify expenditures, because they were trying to get FEMA reimbursement for them, so it was just a category to put storm damage, we do budget in there, just in case something happens, knock on wood, hope it doesn't, um, I will, can change the description on it, because we do use that account every year, if we happen to have an emergency or same storm damage, so I will change the description on that.
Goodie.
Yes.
Um, on page forty two, land lease was but did it involve, it came in at that too. Yay for us, but why? It was so busy.
Um, it's about ten lines down.
Yeah, I would have to.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not really sure, um, what.
Maybe it's a change in the lease and the, for the school.
Oh, very well, could be that, yes, I guess I might be right, so the managers get all the invoices, and they're in charge of coding them all, I I do look at it and try and catch certain things, but I'm really focused on making sure capital projects get charged to capital account, cause auditor, that's, that's important, but with all these other ones, they're, um, coding them, so, but that, that makes sense.
You just. Okay, um, on page forty five, under the water fund revenues. No. Then, um. There had, there was the original and then current budget, and then there was a big period injection there, is that the interest off the accounts?
For under forty?
Uh, yes.
No, that was the.
It's on, uh, forty three.
Forty three, yes, that was me allocating the interest.
Okay.
For the year, to water.
What are you investing in, because man, you can hear it.
Oh, you should, you'll have to talk with our.
Yeah, we, we came to our investment strategy last year, and we're working with some investment brokers that specialize in small districts, and we've increased our investment earnings quite a bit.
Don't we have a meeting coming with them?
Yes, you're gonna come and. I'll have to do that during, uh, agenda review, so I can set that with them, for them to come in and update us.
Okay, then on, on expenses, on, of the line for salaries, the, the, is that the, the, um, the savings that we have there, does that represent a person?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're gonna have, we're gonna have to extend till one o'clock.
I mean, that wouldn't be a full person. That would probably be like, well, we had a break until we could hire someone else.
Nine months or whatever.
Yeah. Six thousand would be a whole. We did have a vacancy in water for the most, most of the year.
I have to say, like, one o'clock, do we still have a quarant?
Um, yes, we do.
Okay. Maybe you can make that hard break or.
Well, I'd really like to be done by one o'clock.
Yeah, I, I really would, yeah, you know, I, I'm just wondering if, if I had to beg out of that.
You'd be okay.
We, we'd be.
We'd be.
Alright. My feelings.
We won't penalize, we'll thank you secretary.
Surprise for everything. Okay, then, um, to jump to page forty nine, on, um, that last, the last line in that top block, thirty nine, six oh eight, zero, M twenty five. Um, pro service miscellaneous, water sustainability operations. We didn't need anybody. We didn't, we, it was just, there's just a surplus in that account. We didn't have to spend as much as we thought. Cause it came, it's, we used about third. The, it, there's a, a section, their budget eject, excuse me, budget, budget adjustment number, and then it's a D A one six four, but the two months operating reserve adjustment. Did we create that in, in twenty four, is that something that we do?
It's been around since I've been here, it was, um, and that, as far as I know, it was enacted when the WRF
Oh.
Came into being, that they should have two months of reserve for operations.
Okay.
Um, I think the thought was to keep injecting into that reserve for operations, and I've held it at seven thirteen, cause, um, and they, and they do budget for it, so like you see, it looks like we're in a big deficit, but that money is not going to be spent unless we do, and actually, the reserves in the WRF are a lot bigger than seven hundred and thirteen thousand.
Okay, so is that money parked with the other investment money?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, then on page fifty, on the revenue side, other revenue, and there's the, that big period activity ninety four, line covered, that's, that's interest money coming in there. On page fifty.
Yes, that is interesting.
Hey.
Yay. Thank you, Zinees.
So then on fifty two.
Yeah.
Shall we through you too, this is, this is another one where, um, it's, um, mostly just expenditures. Because this is where we run our capital projects for the WRF through this, and it kinda has its own fund. It's not included in the operations fund.
Okay, and then we get to page fifty six. And the thing that got my attention on that page was the bottom section, I very fifty on salaries for the wastewater departments, um, the budget amount is seven thirty one, seven thirty one thousand, we used five hundred and twenty one thousand.
Open positions.
What? Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be.
Yeah. And I, and I'll look and see what is current. And again, I'm, I'm solid with our, I do always budget at full, and I have very detailed sheets on budgeting for salaries. So I feel pretty confident in those numbers and that is what we planned for, and so they would be vacancies or full out on unpaid leave for whatever reasons or something like that.
So for twenty-five, twenty-six, you'd see. Seven thirty-one plus some inflation factor.
So, so I will see, I also am very conservative in my budgeting on that, so I. Um, budget at higher steps, so you know, if someone's at a step A salary schedule. The whole year, you know, I'll schedule them at a step B, even if maybe they're not getting to step B more. Until, just again, to give us a little bit of room and to be conservative.
Okay.
Or sometimes, and we have to buy outs of people if they leave. So that can also be included in these numbers at any point, and I don't know if that's happening or not.
Well, that's good, cause the leave, the retirement, I've got a question coming up about that in a sec, but the um. First here. Again, on that, um, page fifty-seven, the second line down.
Okay, so everybody's okay with one o'clock?
I am.
Yes.
Okay.
Um. Again, there was thirteen percent, so probably a head count. Thing led to that, it could. Um, then on the retiree health one, the next to last one in that same block of, of data, now that one.
Went up.
Went up by a third, so. Um. It's well, two parts to the question, so perhaps the, perhaps the root account first rates went up, but in addition to that, perhaps there's somebody retired, I don't know. You guys would know if there was.
There was.
Yeah, was there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And uh, yes, I think we might have had a couple people retire.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And. And the wastewater, as well as they too can change their election at an eight every year.
Okay.
So.
So then going forward, do you kind of look at the. Where guys are, like older guys like me says, okay, it's about time for him to retire, I gotta, I, I need to plan on that, or do you just let that ride for a year and then adjust next year?
Wouldn't let that ride for a year and adjust because um, we have a lot of people who are retirement age that don't retire, so until they. Put in their retirement notice, I don't, not gonna know their plans.
Um. SCADA, I couldn't recall what that acronym stood for.
Yeah, I don't know what it stands for either, but it is in a, a computer system that manages their. Water or in wastewater like distribution stuff, so again, I know it gets alerts if things go down and. Um, again, I'm not the best too, and I don't know what it stands for, but.
That's okay.
It's, it's SCADA, and so all of our water and wastewater infrastructure are integrated into this. Uh, basically a real-time um, alert system. And so SCADA uh, will let us know if a pump goes down, if there's infiltration, I mean, you name it. And so that's what all of our uh, standby operators. Um, when they're, when they're on call at home with their phones, um, basically that phone. That on-call phone is plugged into SCADA, and when SCADA activates, it calls the on-call line, and that's when our team comes in. In addition to when our staff are on-site, they'll get alerts from SCADA, so. SCADA is a, a, basically a monitoring system for all of our water and wastewater um, infrastructure.
Great. It's not a default speech block car company.
Right.
Well, good, yeah. Okay, so then on page fifty-eight, and it's not, this isn't the big item, it just has, it's the postage one, it's about seven or down or so. Um, we hadn't been budgeting, and then we spent. Five hundred dollars on some.
Yeah, and that could have, if you look, there's two lines, okay, well, what you can see there is one.
Yeah.
Has twelve.
Oh, yeah.
Within eleven at the end, and one has a twelve at the end, so I would say that five fifty-four is just in the wrong. Could probably be in the fourth one.
Also. Phone was budgeted eighty-five and it came in at thirty-five, thirty, comma, five. Was that?
Hmm, yeah.
Which group do you want to show us? Fifty-eight.
You know, low block? Yeah.
Was that what your move, with your move?
Potentially, yeah.
They moved to a new office.
Right. So again, that's one.
That is a huge.
That won't be reflected in the news.
Yeah.
When, on uh, on page fifty-nine, and it laps into something else later too. When we talked about the E V truck, is that also known as the Ford Lightning? Is it? Okay, yeah, so there's not like two, there's not an E V truck, you know. E V truck for license, okay.
But we are buying more E V trucks, this is coming here.
Good.
So then we'll have to find different names.
Oh, one.
Mm-hmm.
Um. This is kind of a question for, for on Bravo, on three Bravo, but the. Um. But when we have, like we, there's these, these board adjustments under the capital outlay ones, where we didn't spend all of that money.
Correct.
Or in fact, oftentimes it happens that any of it just doesn't want it, got blessed, the um, does that's all roll? Into a line like this on that next budget?
You're gonna see that, and that's what is the final budget, is approving these, we call them encumbrance roll forwards.
Gotcha.
For capital projects.
Okay, so that's when you look for that, and that budget, it should also.
Yeah, so most of these, I should have asked for it to be rolled forward, but I do meet with the utilities managers and they tell me like. Oh, we're not gonna do this one, or let's roll this forward, or you know, like we do. Go through it, I just aren't automatically asked to roll forward, but you will see that in the final budget.
And then on page, some. Yeah. Um, on page sixty, or page sixty-one, rather. Line number sixty on careful outline, so there, there was that uh. Really large budget adjustment there.
And that's representative of the roll forward.
Okay. Already.
We do those, so the original budget. Is how I like to look at, that's our operating budget, that's preliminary budget, that's like more like how we're operating the year, any capital in there would be new. Projects that were approved for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, the current total budget. Is reflective of like those encumbrance roll forwards for capital projects and any budget adjustments needs throughout the year.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, but I'm not mistaken, I might do that, I didn't uh. Um. I did spend a whole lot of time on the C I P stuff, but I, but I think.
You just see the green, the green things are the ones that top of the.
The new ones, and then it's good if you're.
Printout in columns.
Or number like page sixty-five, you don't have the, I'm so sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Like the skate park project, shall we eliminate sixty-five? You can see project to date of expenditure, we've spent a hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars on the skate parks.
Of the one seventy-eight that is funded.
No, this is inclusive of the share, Cambria, you can see the line item through Cambria Community Council has spent sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine, and we've spent eighty-three thousand.
That was. We, that was the end of. My review on that.
Okay.
Thank you for the time.
Sure, anybody else have anything?
My only question is on page seventy-eight.
Yeah.
Expense total. Uh, current. Total budget is twelve point one.
Mm-hmm. This is, this is a specific uh, project.
This is for the S S T project specifically, which is the wastewater.
Right.
Project, it was asked at some point to have this represented on its own.
Okay, so we have paid four point two million.
Yes.
In loan repayment.
No, we have spent four point two million on our project.
Yes.
Oh. Yeah, this is construction costs.
Okay.
Do you like to do that question?
I'm steering. Yes, it's beautiful. Um, okay, so. Yeah, so um. This is review the um. Um, fourth quarter budget, so we don't have any action on fourth.
Well, we, we have some items that.
Better to.
We still look at, yeah.
I, I think for A you need to, don't you need to vote to move it to the board?
Well, it said no, not for A says review fourth quarter budget report and staff recommendation.
Oh. Do we need to make a motion to, to the, to your board?
Sure.
So moved.
Okay.
So saying.
Okay. Yeah.
All right, I do, I do include that you guys reviewed it and approved it.
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good. All right. Or B.
Or B, so this is discussion in the board.
Public comment on, I mean, that, that's just what has happened the last. So is there any public comment?
On four A?
On four A.
Four A.
You're very thorough.
Okay, anybody online?
Could we take a two-minute break?
Hurry. No, no, okay, nobody else in, for four A, okay.
Okay.
I'm just part of the conference of.
Pardon?
Yes, um, um, it's right here.
Um, yeah.
Have you ever, this is the whole agenda.
Yeah.
And it, yeah. You guys can share.
Wow. So we took a, so we're taking a two-minute break at. Twelve forty minutes. But. Yes, we need to.
That's.
One.
Yeah.
Yeah, the.
Oh, sure. Do we start on that? Um. Page seventy. Uh, seventy-eight, page eighty. Of the, of the packet.
There was. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us. That was, that was really good, especially for our new.
Can we do this in eighteen minutes?
Well.
Might have some public comments.
Yeah, we will have some comments.
Thank you.
Hi, Harry. You can come in, you just can't say anything.
Combination, moving itself.
No, we're just extending it.
Silence.
Yeah.
And there wasn't any.
No, what?
Lot of folks here.
Yeah, we usually.
Did you go on vacation?
No. I know, I didn't go on vacation.
You should have had a time.
I too wish, I would.
I did, I was on vacation, but I just stayed. I just.
Uh, yeah.
Still keep it clean.
Yeah, do you wanted to ask me something?
Yes.
That's what I was gonna ask you. The thing is, when they hired.
Yeah.
How did that? How did they get hired, wasn't it put out to publicly?
Yeah.
Yes. But that's not what I heard, it's.
This year, no. Last year, yes.
But they weren't put, for this year, they were not put out.
We just renewed it. Right, is um, Matthew.
Oh, I'm here, I'm here.
Yeah, so, so there's a question about. Well, can we do this after the meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, I can answer quickly.
No, cause we have to come back.
Okay.
Yeah, we want to get a rest, but we got. He's seventeen as well.
Seventeen minutes, okay. All right, let's, let's do four C.
Or B.
Be more beach.
I'm sorry. This is discussion and consideration of the final budget, full year twenty-five, twenty-six, and approve recommendations to the board of directors. So, um, this. Representation, there, this, this budget is an extension of the preliminary budget that you all approved um, back in April or May, I can't remember. I think it says on here, um, and so the operating. Budget has not changed at all from what was approved before, so what this is including is the. Reserve, it shows the reserve projections, and it also shows the request for moving forward the um. Encumbrances for the capital progress.
Okay.
Specifically, so.
So, so you can only ask questions about.
And you can ask questions about, now this has.
Sorry.
It has questions about everyone, it has a little more detail, you can see the table of contents, the budget narrative.
Yeah. Yeah, the narrative's really good.
Yeah, so that is a little more detailed on, um, and that was in the preliminary budget as well, and how we're allocating everything, um.
Denise, did you need to make any adjustments based on fourth quarter?
Uh, I did not make any adjustments on the budget itself, what I made adjustments on, I mean, what I use the fourth quarter for is to finalize my reserve projections. And the um, final, trying to get the final numbers at the C I P list, Senator, so the capital improvement list. Um, but it didn't change my operating. Um. Estimates. My, what you all saw in the preliminary budget. Um, so I'm kind of not spending a whole lot of time on that beginning, just because that is what you guys have seen before. If you have specific questions on, on that, the right, the narrative.
Okay.
So, um. What I would like you to go over is on page eighty-five. Um. In the um, budget narrative.
Mm-hmm.
It talks. Starting at Tony, general fund revenues are estimated to decrease by five hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Mm-hmm.
I think that those couple paragraphs there are really important. And you just read them out loud.
Okay, so the jet, total general fund revenues are estimated to do decrease by five hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Um, I'm not gonna get those dollar amounts from the fiscal year. This decrease is due to a reduction in administrative cost allocation model, so one of the things is that we identified some certain direct expenditures. Such as insurance, uh. Legal fees. Um, and some personnel costs that we used to just put in admin and we'd allocate out through the cost allocation model. We have identified certain ones that can be allocated directly to who uses those services, so that has overall reduced the amount. Of expenditures in the admin budget, um. And then property taxes are projected to increase um, by a certain amount, and that comes from the county, um. And the total general fund expenditures are estimated to decrease. And again, that is due to the elimination of the safer firefighters and cost efficiencies by department managers. And the change in the administrative cost allocation model, which I just um, explained. Overall, general fund budgets aren't anticipated to have surplus at the two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, which is um. This, the um, representative of the um. Interest. Income. And the franchise fees. Um. Make up whatever, you know, what, any surplus that's in the general fund. The surplus is held in the general fund for emergencies during the year, or much-needed maintenance of general fund properties. Several maintenance and repair projects are not funded for fire and facilities and resources, and may come before the board for approval during the year. Facilities and resources have the roof repair and refinishing of the floor budgeted for twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. Achieving a budget, a balanced budget relies a hundred percent cost recovery. For the administrative fund, these administrative cost allocations and other interfund transfers are eliminated in the C S. C C S E combined budget to determine that revenues and expenditures after interfund activity.
Okay.
Okay. So. Uh, this. All of these budget, which I'm ha, you know, happy to answer questions. If anyone hasn't about the budget, it's everything that you've seen in the preliminary budget, and I'm gonna go down to and highlight before I take questions. Is on page. Was it? Sorry. Um. Um. This has the same salary schedules, um, that overhead cost allocation, that was all on the preliminary budget. Our PAL position allocation listing, our organization charts, the capital improvement. Um, that has been up to, updated with. Updated with our current final fiscal year numbers to make sure we were, um. Getting every last expenditure in there. And then. On page one fifty five, you'll see the reserve. And reserve for encumbrance requests, so this is, um. Really what the board is going to be looking at to approve, uh. Then, or so you'll see the reserve ex, uh, presentation. So cash and bank for audit at June thirty, twenty twenty four, so those are taken from the audit, so we have total C C S D funds of ten point two million. And you can see how it's allocated out between each department. Um, and then I'm estimating where we're gonna end the twenty four, twenty five actuals, and so this is coming from. The unaudited. Version of what, what we just saw and approved previously, it will get audited, and so when it's audited, it, it changes a little bit. Um, they give me some adjusting entries, but so. Uh, you can see that, and then that is saying that the estimated cash balance. Then I am including what I'm estimating for twenty five, twenty six proposed budget, which really is just an estimate. And, and then so our reserve balances at the end of twenty five, twenty six, this is more estimated to be eleven point nine million. Um, so you can see that on the total right hand column. Um, and the page one fifty seven, this is the projects that we're identifying that we wanna move funding forward to the new year. Um. So the general fund. Um. Water. Is represented with W for these are all projects. Um. The W R F operating, you can see this at one hundred and thirteen in there, W R F capital projects. Um, W W is the wastewater, and then I, I leave out the S S T. I kind of separate those from the regular wastewater ones, cuz those are all funded from bond proceeds. So anything that is expended for those funds, I'm subsequently bringing in bond proceeds to cover those expenditures.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But that's here.
On page, I don't, three ninety six, I guess. Um, I know that we no longer have the grant for the three additional firefighters. The salary and wage is only less than a hundred thousand dollars, were we paying? Part of those three firefighter salaries?
No, but this would be, uh, inclusive of any, um, they had some salary adjustments based upon union negotiations as well as increase. Well, you're not talking about benefits, but so that's what that, why wouldn't be the full amount?
Or would be the benefits too, so okay, you answered it, great.
As well as, yeah. That, so that would, yes, salary adjustments or anticipated salary adjustments in there, as well as we are on a step. System.
Uh-huh.
So that's accounted for as well, thanks.
On page one oh seven. Allocated overhead admin boss was two four nine one, now it's two oh six two, is that? Because you.
That's because we changed our methodology?
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's speed through this, this is real. Page one twenty one. The budgets one. One three, one three, and it was one eight five two?
Mm-hmm.
Uh. Well, is the one eight five two original total budget or current budget?
One twenty one.
Cuz the numbers that are in here, we wanna compare against the original budget, so I what, that would be my first question. Um.
Okay.
If that matters, cuz the current total budget on, on the fourth quarter report is gonna be inclusive of any budget adjustments and everything else, which, so it's not apples to apples.
I'm not gonna.
Yeah.
I'll split through all that, because I knew, I knew it, I knew I was supposed to. Uh, double check this stuff, and I didn't. Um, okay, so when we get to page one thirty seven. We eliminated two wastewater collection system maintenance workers. And. One admin tab. And it looks like we've eliminated six firefighters. Three firefighters, three reserve firefighters, correct? Okay, because I kept hearing three. We lost three.
We lost three, but we are no longer to having reserve firefighters on staff either. And the, the wastewater, we did, we re-classed, we re-classed some people, or we re-classed. The positions, um, that gave us a little more flexibility in our hiring practices. To, to be able to hire people at certain classifications, so that overall. Amount of positions is the same, got it?
Okay. Anybody else?
On, um, yeah, back on page one oh one. In the, uh, under the general fund. The category forty three for the revenue. Isn't listed. It's, we jumped from category fees.
So what is forty three?
Forty three is other revenue?
I wondered about that too.
Lifelines.
Do you not have any other revenue?
I, uh, I'm gonna have to jump to the other budget to see.
What that was.
What the other revenue was. I may have moved to that.
There was something on it, or, cuz that's what my trigger was. You're up.
If.
In some interest income radio vault. Miscellaneous revenue, all in the admin, admin department.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, you can, you can look. And it maybe it doesn't need to be there.
But you're saying on page. One oh one.
Oh, yeah.
Um. It's missing from page one oh one, but it was in the fourth quarter on page. Oh, I forgot.
Is it F N R, F M R?
Yeah, because F N R, radio vault goes into admin, so one oh one is F N R, so that's a different department. And you wanna make sure we're looking at the same department.
Yeah.
So. Uh. The F N R department had miscellaneous revenues. Based upon some, um, equipment. Um, they. Surplus equipment. They didn't budget for it in twenty five, twenty six, we're not anticipating surplus.
This, disposing.
Yeah.
Now, we talked about the legal fees, um, earlier, and on one oh seven. If you come down to. Um, if I'm on the right, if I'm in the same spot. Um, about halfway down, there's two there, the, um.
That's all the legal.
Right.
And people went down.
Yeah, it is.
So that has to do with the, uh, allocation model that we changed.
Oh.
I, that, I. That money is still there, it's just residing in different departments, and I did have to, I guesstimate on how much each department will use. So this would be other legal fees, like if, you know, when we had the well issue, or the schoolhouse issue, we spent a lot of extra money on legal fees for water. So I allocated some of that budget to water, some to wastewater, some to F N R, some to fire. Um, I don't know if they're gonna use it all or not, so we'll adjust those numbers, so you're staying on to see.
The money still budgeted out there.
Yes.
Okay, it's one o'clock.
Okay, I think, I think we're, but where I'm comfortable.
Okay. So if you have to leave, that's okay, Scott?
If for.
We're close.
Light at the end of the tunnel.
Yeah. I would say, um, one fifteen probably. Um. So the committee members don't have any other questions? No?
Okay.
Okay, um, we need to take public comments.
Yes.
Yes.
We're back to page one oh one.
Okay.
So is the.
Can you come up here, please, sir?
Page one oh one, fully from resource.
Yes.
Our discussion this morning came up. That, um, bowing. Category fifty two, services and supplies is broken down specifically to the ranch. I mean, category. Fifty salaries was not broken down.
It's, it's not gonna be. Because we don't, we don't.
Dedicate?
Dedicate certain hours, but what David said is that he would start doing that if that's.
Well, that's what I mean, though. Obviously, if you wanna find out how much district is spending.
Right.
We'd have some kind of feedback.
I think that would be a really good idea.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yes. Hey. Anyone else? Okay.
Uh. Happy to get out of that chair.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Overlong meeting, Max. Um, well, this morning we heard from Chief Berkey that the forest is not fire safe.
Right, um, the general revenue fund comes from.
Property tax here in Cambria. If there. Hopefully never will be, but if there is a devastating fire, or any kind of fire. Um, it will make Cambria significantly less attractive and probably lower property values. And lower funds for the fire department, as well as when other funds come out of the. General fund, so we'd asked that the funding for contractors on the ranch be restored. Not that F F, or F F R P is going to be less supportive. But then David has more autonomy and he can make decisions without having to come to us and ask for funds, which he's. Doesn't do as often as I'd like him to do. Um, that it get restored to six percent of F N R's budget, or at least fifty thousand dollars, which in fact is probably not going to destroy the district. It's less than one percent of the overall budget. Thank you.
I have, I have a question, um. So, um, you said that there was in some, in your public comment, that there was thirty eight thousand dollars that you had budgeted?
Yeah.
Last year.
It was either twenty eight or thirty eight.
Okay, remember, yeah, whatever it was.
Was.
Thirty, let's say thirty.
Thirty.
Yeah. Um, that was budgeted that we didn't use.
Right.
Okay, so, um, and part of the, and I, um, I'm gonna stop your time because I'm taking your time.
Okay.
Um. So. If that's the case, cuz we need to find a way to not let that happen anymore. And that's part of what this ant hawk will do is, how, how can we, how can we fix that? Um. So looking at how we put forward, um, income that comes from that, is that money still available?
That was last year's budget.
Right.
So that's, budget's a calendar year.
Right.
We have a different fiscal year than you do.
Okay.
Um. No, but we have a new budget this year.
Okay, and, and, and what is the budget for ranch maintenance for?
I don't remember.
Okay, can you give me that, um, that amount eventually?
Some of it's been spent.
Yeah.
And some of it, we're still waiting for bills. From the people who did the invasive weeding.
Okay.
And if they didn't use up. Because. We had taken some money and put it into basic weeding that wasn't in that money.
Yeah.
For a contract for spring, if they don't use that up, one of the things we could do would be. Reimburse. Some money, but that was for your fiscal year, which is already closed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
The whole non-overlapping fiscal year is.
Yeah.
Kind of annoying, but we're real happy with the calendar year.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I did that, I, I like that too.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so. If we looked at. And, and what I'm saying is, you know, looking at what the budget is right now, and if this. And if this committee decides to, um, advocate for an increase in the ranch maintenance budget. Um. Would you think that F F R P would be, um, willing to pledge that kind of an increase to?
Uh, we would, we're gonna be going into our budgeting in October.
Mm-hmm.
This year is, um. Not a great year financially.
Yeah.
For the United States.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how. Our fundraising is going so far, the stock market seems to be going well, which is important, but it could crash, I mean, we're.
I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah.
How to, um. Get us both on, um, um, on the record to say that we, we would be willing to do that.
I, I'm not in a position to promise any money.
Yeah.
But what I can tell you is that every year we've spent more and more on the ranch, because we had more and more to spend.
Okay.
That I can tell you.
Okay, thank you.
You won't.
Yeah. Hey, any other public comment? Yes, Ellie.
I think another, another method for, um. Talking about different types of cost sharing.
Yeah.
Might be, um. I would be reluctant to say, well, here's part of money. But I, I would be more likely to advocate or saying, ask C C S D to come to us and say, these are the things that we want to do. Cute. Um, I, I think that might be, um, more prudent way.
Okay.
To do that.
So looking at tasks. Okay. Okay. Any other public comment? Yes.
Just one.
Ms. Andrew.
You know, as I reflect on all the conversation that's happened, um, and think about the prospect and, and, and hopeful for the prospect. Of us collaborating to solve this longer term problem. No matter what, though, that's gonna take some time.
Yeah.
Right now, we have a fire danger, we have, uh, areas of the ranch that are not safe, so we have. A situation that needs to be addressed immediately. Um, rather than getting caught up in the battle of the budgets. And so. You know, every budget is a reflection of priorities, there are trade offs, there are difficult decisions, of course. Um, I mean, I thank God that we're not talking about a sum of money that is twenty percent of the budget or something, I mean, it's. Really. Phenomenal, although I know every penny counts. Um, but prioritizing the safety of the homeowners and the numerous visitors to the ranch is a huge priority, and if something goes wrong. We're not liable, we, we don't want anything to go wrong, but if something goes wrong, it's C C S D who will own that liability. So we are just, I'd like to say we are maintaining our steadfast position. That C C S D restores sufficient funding to ensure the ranch's safety for fire and public access. And we wanna partner with you too.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other public comment? Online?
No.
Okay. Okay. Um, so after that, any other comments from the, um. Committee?
Right, with, um. Seems like our mission today is, is to put a budget in place.
To make recommendations to the board. About what changes you would wanna see to the budget that you've been reviewing.
And to approve the encumbrance roll forward.
Oh, and then approve the encumbrance roll.
Or it changes to encumbrance.
Yeah.
The, um. As far as making any modifications to. What that support is for the, for the ranch. I'm not sure that's what our mission is today. I, it's, um.
Our mission is to make recommendations to the board.
Right, and so. I'm not sure where I'm trying to go with this, but, but the, um. Seems to me that you've already got a, a path. That you're gonna pursue. That will, that will not be, uh. I don't know that, I don't know that supplementing or turning that amount to fifty thousand dollars is gonna be the magic number.
Right.
My suspicions are that it's not. And so I don't know for us to take in, Reese. To say fifty thousand dollars means to be what that is. To say fifty thousand dollars means to be what that is. I don't think that's based on anything. I think it's based on maybe past practice, but.
Right.
But not based on any specific need. And we're overstepping our bounds to make it an unsatisfactory recommendation to them of anything. I think we need to pursue, need to pursue. With that committee that you have. And take, and get everybody at the table talking. Yeah. Which barely, I, I. I've never been involved in any of those discussions, but I think it needs to go there first before we. Start trekking off onto something that's, that we don't even know is going to be adequate, even remotely adequate. Five and five day follow up.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think we. What I want to raise at the beginning in my comments was, you know. Figuring out the true magnitude of the problem is sort of the challenge. Looking at all the potential fixes, I think. What struck me was perception. Possibly, probably based on reality of a breakdown in communication or a difference of opinion. Leading to a breakdown in communication. Which needs to be reached out, because it goes beyond finance. I think this represents a potential rift in the community. So understanding what the timeframe for the board and possibly with more recommendations from us. What the timeframe for a future decision is when it really needs to be made. I don't think we needed to address it, the budget, if there is a. Budget adjustment to be made, or is more than capable doing that at a later date.
Yep.
And but I think it's important to, I, I think it's important as well, just goes beyond finance, bringing everybody back together a little bit. And. Having everybody satisfied that all voices were heard, all options were considered, and the truth of the problem was addressed. So. Not a big, kind of kicking things down, kicking cans down roads, but. More time might be prudent in this case.
Other court members?
I agree. I think it's really important to, you know, have the app of committee meetings, so. Parties come together, they listen without malice or hostility. Make decisions, but I also think it might be interesting to do. An assessment of what the cost would be. To do the weed debate man to get those dead trees gone. And see what we're actually talking about in dollars and cents.
Yeah, yeah, beyond just what budget. There's a problem for the budget and then there's a.
Problem.
There's a, a task.
Yeah.
To be accomplished.
And there's also, we did hire another position. So even though the reduction in the line item from a ranch, you know, we lost, you know, went down forty thousand dollars, we're paying. Over forty thousand dollars for another position.
Close to eighty or ninety thousand.
On some of that work, which goes to, you know, doing that analysis of time.
Yes.
Of course, it is, is beneficial. But that is where some of that funding. Majority of that funding went was to fund another.
But that you hire is a shared position, correct?
I, I mean, they, oh, yes, because they're not on the ranch a hundred percent. We've never had a position where someone has been on the ranch a hundred percent. So yes, they, in their spare time, they do the right other stuff. Yes.
I'm not sure. Ad hoc committee is the right solution. I think it needs to be a permanent. Not a temporary.
Oh, F F R P committee?
I think. The whole setup, you know, I, I just got the. Observation easement today, but you know, it calls for ongoing cooperation. It's not going to be this year only.
Right.
So I just think it should have something a little bit more of permanency. I think we all agree that. We had a. Breakdown in communication, for better or worse, and we need to fix that.
And that would be in addition to the pros? Committee?
Um, not, not initially. Pros. Well, not initially. I think the recommendations coming out of the ad hoc may be. That. There's a permanent committee. I don't know. Yeah. Just, just a minute.
Yeah, I, that, I, I think that's completely possible.
Okay.
But I think if I was on that committee, I, I would think we need a more.
Permanent.
Permanent.
Okay.
Core for these things to be discussed.
Okay.
It is enormous asset.
Oh, it is. And that's the part, yeah, that's the part that, that cannot be overlooked at all.
People are going to change over time.
Yeah.
So to have a one-time fix is not, is not viable.
Right.
Absolutely, I mean, agreement. This is about to be a living relationship.
And I don't disagree, I disagree with Mark. I don't think we can, any four lawyers.
Also, working for you won the battle.
Yeah. No.
I appreciate that.
Um.
Made my public comment. Am I able to make another comment?
Not, not really. I mean, like two sentences, like.
I questioned does the model of hiring additional facilities and person.
To help address the needs of the ranch.
Yeah.
It's going to work. And last year, quite a bit of salary was left on the table in the F and R department. Saw that salary allocated toward projects on the ranch were a hell of a long way, just to help along with.
So, okay, so, and I know Ellie wanted to say something. I'll give you two cents.
We made progress.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Difficult topic.
What?
On a difficult topic.
Yes.
But I think that time is of the essence.
Yes.
Today.
Yeah.
And waiting for an ad hoc committee to say, make the ranch safe. Is probably not the best answer. Something else to happen soon, even if it's still.
Yeah, and. Um. I think, and, and, and I don't, this committee really can't do this, but. I, I heard from you. That that's a priority, getting the ranch fireproof. So.
You didn't really. The trees that are down in there, I mean, you're, it's an extensive amount beyond our budget.
Yeah.
Even F F R P's budget.
Well, and the fire, fire department is helping.
And seeing that's where I've kind of collaborated with them in September and October by going out and cutting down dead trees. We'll ship what we can with the material or the equipment that we have. Whatever is exceeding that, you know, twelve inches and stuff of that nature. Spread it out for the habitat. We could do that or haul it out. That's something that we've considered.
We have a small army of volunteers who would like to provide that project help.
Okay, so, so I will, I will say this, because I don't think I have to agendize. To create an ad hoc. I don't think I, do I have to agendize to create in, no. So in August, at our August meeting, I will create the ad hoc.
You, as a committee member, you can create an ad hoc from the committee level, but if you want to commit. An ad hoc from the board level, then you would have to at least make that motion.
Okay, but it doesn't, okay, so I'm going to get it on the agenda. Okay.
We're at the eleven.
Yeah. 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 Yeah, so, well. I don't, what I hear from you guys is that you. Laura, it's two sentences.
Yes, two sentences. The thing is, this looks like it's going to take time. In the meantime, why is the F F R P people, their budget going down? Keep it where it was while you decide what to do instead of penalize.
And it didn't go down this last year. It went down two years ago.
I know.
So we're going to leave it, it sounds like we're going to leave it where it is. We're going to create the ad hoc in August. There are different charges that this ad hoc is going to need to look at. Number one is to reestablish the relationship. Between F F R P and C C S D. And. I'm, I think out of this, out of this meeting. When we make recommendations to the board about. So the recommendation would be not to increase the amount. That's what you're saying. But to say that the. That the. Ranch needs to be fire safe. Immediately, that needs to be a big priority. So that, that could be a recommendation that we would make.
And that could be done through a budget.
Yeah, and if it has to be a budget adjustment, then that's what happens.
That's more thoughtful. Do we want to move now?
Yes. Motion is to prove the budget as recommended.
Right.
With a proviso about the need to be making sure that the ranch is fire safe.
Yeah.
And ask the board to seriously consider that issue.
Yes.
Recommend that they seriously.
Right.
Yes.
Seconded.
Okay, so who's? Who's first? Steve, okay. And you're second. Okay, and. Okay, is that all you want in the motion?
Will you? Do we want to add that make any recommendations of allocating additional funds if necessary?
So budget adjustment?
Yeah.
That's some part of my motion.
Okay. Do you not?
Well, I'm just assuming that that kind of is implied.
Well, be a recommendation.
They, they're consideration for them.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and that's okay. Second, okay. Um. Any. We'll go ahead and vote. All who's in favor?
I.
I. Okay, oh, and then should we do a second motion about the? Carryovers or what it?
No, I think you, you, you approved it as is.
Okay.
And that's your one recommendation.
Okay.
Where the ranch needs to be fire safe, budget adjustment if necessary.
Yeah.
Never you turn to my hand raised.
Oh. When did it raise?
I've been working.
Okay. So is somebody who's already made a comment?
I don't know if he's commented yet. Dennis D. Chubb?
Oh, he has.
Not on this item.
Oh, that's right, Dennis. Okay, Dennis, we'll take you.
All right, I'm sorry, I guess my hand was a little later than it should have been. Just.
Okay.
This will be really, really short. Just as a reminder, and I'll, and I'll forward this to you. So you can distribute to the board if you, if you choose. But back in October of twenty twenty four, when I was a member of the R and I committee, I did a report. On the Santa Rosa. Blood risk mitigation and management. And I, I developed an initial discussion plan. And one of the things that needs to be considered when you're doing fire management is, is the, the potential for exacerbating the flood risk. Depending on what you do with the, with the trees. If you drop down first next to the creek. Then they're going to create an embankment which could exacerbate the flood situation. So. Again, I'll, I'll send you the report, but please take a look at that as you're going through the process of developing the plan for flood. And, and as the.
Don't make a problem.
Okay. Right, thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
No.
No. Okay, good. Okay, so what I saw was. And. Do we need to restate the? The motion? I have a, I have it down here.
One last time, why not?
Okay. So the motion is to accept the. Budget as it was written. To recommend that the board appoint an ad hoc committee. To address the issue with the ranch. And. To look at the relationship between C C S D and the ranch. To look at the true magnitude of the problem. And to recom, oh, and to require. The. That the ranch become fire safe. As a, as the highest priority. And thirdly, if there needs to be a budget adjustment based on that, that that's what should happen.
It's viciously.
Okay, and, and am I getting it all? Correct? All right. Yeah, I'm not going to take future agenda items, because we have a list from last week, last month. So that we still have a lot of things to do. Remember, if you want to be secretary, let them know. And I really appreciate, yes.
No, I just have a question. Are you thinking like a six-person committee, three to the ranch?
Who?
Two and two.
Two and two. Two and two. Yeah, because that's, that's really all we'll have is, we can only do two board members. So then two from the ranch. And if they want to send more, I mean, they can have as many people there as they were. All right. Um, so I would like to adjourn the meeting. The time is.
eighteen twenty five.
Thirteen twenty five, you're, you're old military, huh?
Well, that's what the clock says.
President, President Scott, do you want me to address the paradise issue?
Oh, yes, go right ahead. This is the paradise issue. Yes, we're, it's over, but go ahead and do it. It can be on Wednesday's one. Okay.
So there was a comment about the R F P and how Paradise got the second year of the contract?
Right, right.
So it was written into the R F P that the general manager. Could extend the initial agreement by one year of up to two years without bringing it before the board. So this would be the final year that we're in contract with Paradise Tree Service. And we'll put out another R F P next year. But if the Swartzes want to look at the original agreement and the R F P language. It will state in there that the general manager is allowed to extend it up to one year without board approval.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you for spending your part of your vacation with us.
I was on vacation, I thought it was meeting somewhere.
No, he's.
He's always in the motel room, looks like.
He's in the Azores.
Yeah.
What time is it there?
It is eight thirty.
In the morning?
At night.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah. Eight thirty in the evening. Portugal. Oh.
Okay, Portugal, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.